Ready, Mr. Wexler?
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. I'd like to announce that the Board met an executive session on a personnel issue prior to this meeting. Mr. Berman, would you please call a roll?
Mr. DiMillo.
Here.
Mr. Aliva.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis is on his way into the building. Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Dr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here. I'd ask all of you to please stand in the pledge of allegiance presented by our Chief of Police.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. Consider Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In these unhappy times, it's our pleasure tonight. Our first item is a presentation from Mr. Dick Hammond from the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association for our Haverford Police Department with an accreditation certificate. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Chief, and Mr. Hammond.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Hammond, take this this way, please. Good evening. Is that on? Is that working?
It should be on. No problem.
It goes here. Does it go here? Sorry. Thank you for giving me a little bit of time here this evening to present a certificate of accreditation to your police department and just explain that program a little bit. Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association introduced this program in 2001, and the first agencies were accredited in 2002. To this day, we've done 146 agencies, and only 126 are still accredited. So it's not a rubber stamp. There's been a number, 19, I guess, have lost the accreditation over the years. We started out with 108 standards, and we're up to 139. It's a continuous process, very fluid. The process basically is, we have these 139 standards I referred to. The agency has to have a policy for each one of those standards, and then show us compliance, show us that they actually do what they say they do. Whenever they feel as though they're ready, we send in three assessors from across the state and pretty much look through the chief's department to see what he's doing. It's a little bit stressful. I think anybody sitting in here can just think for a minute what it would be like if they came into your office and opened up your file drawers and wanted to look around and then tell you whether you're doing it right or not. It can be very stressful. I think Chief Ioli understands how stressful it is, but it's very important, and he's seen that, and he's got the Department to accreditation. It's a three-year period that accreditation's good for, and then we'll come back and do the whole thing over again in three years. I think that in the days that we're seeing now in society, we're under the microscope, and I think that with this program under your belt, you're ready to be looked at under the microscope. And I thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Dick, thank you very much for coming down. I want to especially mention Sergeant Gene Dolan, who headed this up for me and for the department. He worked long and hard on this. We started this 10 years ago in our other building, and because of the issues with the building, we had to stop. When we came here, we started going full force again. So it was really a hard, hard job for Gene to get everything up to where it should be. And we're all very proud of our department and the men and women at work here. It's a big, big thing for us to be accredited. So Commissioners, thank you for your support as usual, and this, like I said, is a big step for us. So thanks again. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
No, I sent it to you, I think, if you want to do it, or...
Do you have a copy of it? Our next item, our next item is a proclamation in honor of the Delaware County Arts Week. I'll read that on behalf of the township. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in recognizing the many artisans in our county, and whereas Delaware County is a county rich with culture, and we are blessed with talented artists and performers who contribute to the artistic and cultural fabric of our community, and whereas the Delaware County Arts Consortium, formed in 2009, includes representatives from over 50 Delaware County arts organizations and strives to advance the economic vitality of the arts community and promote the value of Delaware County's cultural resources to the local community and beyond. And whereas the arts and culture organizations in the Delaware County contribute approximately $64 million and 918 full-time jobs to the local Delaware County economy, and whereas members of the Delco County Arts Consortium will hold their second annual Delco Arts Week, the week of October 3rd through October 10th, 2020, to showcase the arts in Delaware County and engage and introduce community members and visitors to the many artistic venues and experiences that Delaware County has to offer. And whereas Delco Arts Week will feature more than 75 different performances, exhibits, workshops, concerts, tours, and other events taking place in 50 venues throughout Delaware County, now therefore be it resolved that we, the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, hereby declare October 3rd through October 10th, the year 2020, to be Delco Arts Week, resolved as 14th day of September by the Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners. Well, that's a, that's a great proclamation. Today, this is a tough year for the arts. I know having at least a daughter that's up in New York, graduate of NYU's Theater Group, and this has been a very tough year for the arts. So if you have any time, please support any of these activities. It's a very rough year employment-wise for anybody in the arts. All the shows have been canceled. Broadway's dark. Most of the shows in this area are dark. The theaters are dark. And as we slowly come back alive, there's one industry that needs our support, and I think we need it to relieve the pressure that we're under as well. So it's proud to proclaim that Delco Arts Week. Thank you very much. Our next item is our Township Auditor Update. Mr. Anderson? Making his last-minute notes. Getting his joke down.
I know, I know. Those Eagles.
And the Phillies. Phillies are bad, too.
All right, I've reviewed the expenses and warrants for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions have been answered to my satisfaction. In addition, I want to say thank you to the township for picking up the large tree branches that fell this past week in my car. They did quite, they were very large and did quite a bit of damage, and I was not looking forward to having to run a chainsaw to cut them up. So I was very glad to see that the town, well, very happy when I saw that the township had picked them up.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Appreciate that. Is your car going to make it?
It is, it is. It might be technically totaled, but that's because it's worth probably two grand.
Good thing you have that backup. Good luck. Good thing you had a backup, right?
What's that?
Good thing you had a backup bike.
Yeah, my wife's car. She lets me use it.
Okay. Very good. Our next item is the Citizens Forum, which is typically 20 minutes of registered speakers on agenda items. We have two speakers that are requested to speak via remote. Mr. Richard Kerr is our first registered speaker. Is he online, Mr. Berman?
Difficult to say. I don't see...
Third from the bottom.
Third from the bottom. Richard Kerr, thank you very much. It just takes a minute, so it's a little slow to respond. So just bear with me. I'll let you know.
And while we're doing that, I'm just going to ask the Commissioners here locally. We've had some, not complaints, but in the process of using Zoom...
Yeah, one second, Richard.
We, we jump in a little too quick. The transition on the remote side isn't as quick as we are. So I'll ask you to speak clearly into the microphone. We are socially distanced. If you think you're muffled, you can remove your mask to talk into the microphone, but then you can replace it when it's not your turn to talk. And then that way, it allows the people at home to make the transition to hear us. So thank you.
Mr. Kerr, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, we're ready for you.
Okay. My name is Richard Kerr. I live at 18 Meadows Lane, Haverford, in the Cooper Town section of Haverford Township. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Friends of Haverford Trails. We enthusiastically support the adoption of the item on tonight's agenda concerning the acquisition of property at 1744 Vermont Road. Acquisition of this property by Haverford Township would achieve two long-term goals. First, it would fill a missing link to create a continuous greenway of land along Darby Creek, owned and held for public benefit and use. This recreational parkland would extend from the border with Upper Darby Township below Vermont Road all the way north to Old Westchester Pike and Hilltop Road. Acquisition of this property would complete Darby Creek Valley Park in Haverford Township. That would cap a process begun by the township in 1933 with the establishment of what was then called Haverford Township Park. It was our first municipally-owned park. Over generations, successive boards like you have continued this effort to where today's Darby Creek Valley Park includes Merry Place and McDonald Field. There is simply no better use for this creekside land. Secondly, acquisition of this property would make possible the extension of our existing section of the Darby Creek Trail, south to Drexel Hill and beyond. The present paved and accessible trail opened in October 2013 as the first along Darby Creek. It is extremely popular for recreational activity by all age groups. In the past several years, the count around the trail has tallied over 70,000 users passing by annually. They range from babies in strollers to ulsters with canes and walkers. The trail truly provides lifelong recreation and enjoyment to all. For bicyclists, however, the existing trail segment lacks connections to safe cycling roads at both ends. For many runners, today's mile-long trail is too short to fully serve their needs. The Darby Creek Trail is a designated priority trail within the greater regional major trail network called the Circuit, which is now more than half-completed. It is also a major component in Delaware County's complementary planned trail network. The county, Haverford, Upper Darby, and Lansdowne have all been designing and building segments of its longer, continuous Darby Creek Trail. Acquisition of this one property will be a major keystone event in the quest to fully realize the potential of such a trail. The popularity of the Darby Creek Trail within our township is proven by the fact that all three of our neighborhoods along it, Westgate Hills, Hilltop, and Pilgrim Gardens, have built walking foot trails to access this main trail. The Friends of Haverford Trails strongly urge this board to move forward with this property acquisition. Our offer to contribute some of our own publicly donated funds towards this purchase still stands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our second registered speaker is Mr. Victor Donet.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, Victor, we're ready.
Great. My name is Victor Donet. I'm a township resident living at 117 Rodney Circle in Cooper Town. I'm part of the Haverford Township Solar Project, which has been exploring ways to help the township meet its Ready for 100 commitment of using 100% renewable energy by 2035. Our research suggests that the township government could generate 30% of its electricity needs by putting rooftop solar panels on four sites: the Crack, the Skadium, the Hilltop Facilities Buildings, and the Township Administration Building. The roughly 900-kilowatt solar panel system would cost about $1.6 million. This system could be financed in a number of ways. First, by outright purchase of the system using low-interest municipal bonds. The township could reduce the cost of the system by partnering with a private entity to gain access to federal tax credits, either through an upfront bond payment or through a long-term power purchase agreement, which would involve no upfront payment. One possible partner could be a community co-op in which local residents would be the investors. Over 30 years, the solar panels would pay for themselves, and there would be another 15 years of use during which the township would be getting free electricity. We recommend that the Board of Commissioners move forward with acquiring this solar panel system during the 2021 year so as to be able to access the federal tax credits, which get greatly reduced after that year. By so doing, the township will be providing leadership for other communities in the region and educating and inspiring its citizens to take action against climate change, as well as making an important first step towards fulfilling its Ready for 100 commitment. My question for the Township Commissioners tonight is, what are the next steps that the township can make towards making the solar panel project a reality? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Donet. They are our two registered speakers. We have several comments, requests for comments made to come in on the unregistered speakers. I will read those. We have about six or seven. Dear Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to have the Haverford Township Solar Project present its findings and recommendations on solar arrays for township buildings at the September 1st, 2020 Work Session. I hope that you will consider implementing one of the approaches outlined by the team to bring solar power to township facilities in 2021. Thank you for your bold commitment to 100% renewable electricity by 2035. Let's move just as boldly into action now. Best regards, Jennifer Leath, 2928 Morris Road, Ardmore. Second comment from the audience is from Mr. Mitch Cron, 2928 Morris Road in Ardmore as well. Commissioners, great decision to upgrade the township library. To me, it looks like a better idea to keep the library on Darby Road. In that location, school kids have good access to the library after school from Haverford High School and Haverford Middle School. The Brookline Building is too far from the dense Darby Road corridor, where the township needs destination location to provide foot traffic for the Darby Road and Brookline Boulevard business. The Brookline location is tempting because there's lots of space and parking, but keep in mind the upcoming generation of homebuyers and families are seeking density and walkability, not drivability and oversized parking lots. Let's create a great, improved library in the dense, walkable corridor of Darby Road. One way to achieve this is to switch the Oakmont Building into a renovated township library facility, and the school district administrative offices move into the present township library building. Darby Road will then truly be our core, walkable, economic development corridor, bookended by the Oakmont Township Library and the Skadium Township Administration Complex. Those are my thoughts. Thanks for taking my comment. Have a great night. Mitch Cron, 2928 Morris Road. Our next comment from the public is from Kathleen Schotler. The question is, would it be possible to keep the library on Mill Road as a children's library and build a new one on Arlington as the main library? Next comment is from John McGreevy. Dear Township of Haverford Commissioners, I am urging you to table the vote on the library plan set for today, September 14th, 2020. As you know, it has been many months since there was a public discussion of the library options. A decision of this magnitude deserves a renewed and good-faith effort by the Board of Commissioners to summarize the existing options for the library with complete information, including visuals, specification, costs, and key considerations for each option. Commissioners should forward these options to all other constituents, providing sufficient advanced notice before the Commissioners' vote. It appears that too much attention is being paid to the cost of the proposals, with the least expensive option to renovate the existing library site being favored by some Commissioners without recognition that this is a long-term investment decision. I am concerned that only one architectural firm prepared a library proposal for the Brookline School Site, even though conventional wisdom suggests that at least a couple of estimates from architectural firms should be obtained before moving forward with a major construction project. This is especially important if the Commissioners deem a single architectural estimate is too expensive. Other estimates will reveal other price points to complete the project. I share the concern of some Commissioners and many Havertown residents that there will remain woefully inadequate parking at the current library site even after renovation. The township could spend approximately $12 million on renovating the current library, only to find that the end product is mediocre, still does not resolve the parking problem, and likely will not be a durable solution to meet the library's evolving needs over many years. I appreciate, I appreciate that Brookline School neighbors may not be enthusiastic at present about having the library in their neighborhood, but I think this decision requires leadership and foresight to see beyond immediate reservation. Neighbors, other township residents, and certainly Commissioners should appreciate that a new library at the Brookline School Site has the potential to be the crown jewel of the township, an aesthetic and functional masterpiece that is the pride of Haverford and the envy of neighboring community. A well-planned library at the Brookline Site has the potential to boost the real estate values in the 8th Ward and throughout Haverford Township. And the library, like the Crack, can be built with environmental responsibility and consistent with the township's regional leadership in renewable energy and sustainability. This decision before the Board is anything but routine, and is more than simple dollars and cents in 2020 determination. This library will need to serve the township and indeed represent our community for 50, 75, or perhaps even more years to come. This decision is too important to rush tonight, despite the issue fatigue that the Commissioners are likely experiencing. Commissioners can take the easiest and least expensive path, which I suspect will be to vote tonight to renovate the existing library site. This choice will most likely prove to be shortsighted and result in a new library that is an embarrassment to our township rather than a source of pride. As an alternative, Commissioners have an opportunity to earn the appreciation of current and future Haverford residents, who will come to recognize that faced with a difficult decision, this Board made the right choice by taking the long view. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, John D. McGreevy III, 509 Covington Road. Our next item is a letter from Ms. Hannah Turlish. Dear Haverford Township Commissioners, as a few of you know firsthand, and all of you can imagine, parenting young children during the COVID-19 pandemic has been a significant challenge. Living in a country that devotes a little public funding as possible to programs that support working families is a struggle in the best of times. Ever since March, many millions of parents have been tasked with working full-time and caring for their children with the additional burden of at-home schooling during the academic year. The creativity and resilience of American parents has been both inspiring and frustrating to behold. As one such parent, I am proud to be part of the collective can-do spirit, but I also yearn to live in a country that has greater commitment to taking care of all of its citizens. To focus on Haverford Township, our excellent schools and teachers have worked tirelessly to keep our children learning and physically and emotionally healthy. We are deeply grateful for their efforts and are not in any way trying to criticize the work they have done. This letter is rather about other systems that could be put in place locally to help parents placed in a nearly impossible situation. There is simply no way around the reality of how hard it is to have children at home rather than within the school wall, and is often true these days when people need support. Township parents have formed a Facebook group to share ideas and provide each other with moral support. Quotations "Haverford Parents Navigating Pandemic Schooling" now has over 2,000 members, and a quick scan of the post makes it clear that we are stressed out. One area of need, particularly if this stretches on for a long term, is for physical space, space to let our children run, move, and come together in predetermined pods for collaborative learning and safe face-to-face interaction. Space that is truly accessible to all, regardless of ability to pay. Space where a parent, rather than a paid employee, provides the needed guidance and supervision for the children in a specific pod. Parents are already reaching out to one another to form pods, but having public space to go would allow more room to roam and a greater ability to bring in kids who might otherwise be left out. As Commissioners, you know what public space is available, parentheses, the old administration building, for example, close parentheses, and what vacant storefronts and outdoor spaces might be rented for very little cost. You can help rally forces in each of your wards to address this as a true township emergency, with our youngest residents bearing more than their share of COVID burden. If it does indeed take a village to raise a child, we are asking the leaders of this village to take action and facilitate solutions for those of us navigating the fragile balance of paid work and care for our kids. Signed, Hannah B. Turlish, 412 Mill Road, and Hannah Raghazi, 1734 Hawthorne Avenue, Havertown. Our last comment. Dear Commissioners, I respectfully request your consideration of amendment to Township Code Section 49-13 to include domestic felines. It is well documented that cats, domestic and feral, have reduced wild bird populations and are killing small animals, which are food for wild mammals and raptors, thus disrupting the food chain. Animal welfare and bird conservation groups, including Humane Society of the United States, the American Humane Society, the American Association of Feline Practitioners, the American Veterinary Medicine Association, the Audubon Society, and the American Bird Conservancy, support confinement of cats while outdoors, and the average life expectancy of an indoor cat is nearly double that of outdoor cats. There is also the matter of double standards for owners of dogs. Neighboring Townships Marple and Lower Marion both prohibit cats running at large, along with Delaware County Governments of Bethel, Brookhaven, Collingdale, Glen Olden, Lansdowne, and Upland. I will gladly supply citations to those code sections upon request. Every homeowner and renter has the right to undisturbed enjoyment of their private property. I believe it is past time for Haverford Township to bring its code in line with many municipalities, local and nationwide. Thank you for your consideration and action on this matter. And then there's a cite from the Collingdale Code that states, "She'll be unlawful for any owner or custodian of any cat or domesticated animal to run at large or stray beyond the limits or premises of its owner or custodian to cause any damage to any buildings, lawns, shrubbery, flower beds, or any other real or personal property, or to cause any annoyance to persons within the borough of Collingdale, or to tie or fasten any such cat or domesticated animal in any public place or street within the borough for any purpose." I think that's pretty much it. I believe that concludes the comments.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, Mr. Berman.
On the webinar that we've set up, there's at least one resident with a hand raised. Shall I do that now?
Yep, please.
Okay. The first one is Stephanie Archer with her hand raised, and I'm going to unmute her, see if that works. Stephanie, are you there?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect.
All right, perfect. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Archer, and I live at 236 Frederick Road in the Paddock Farms section of Haverford. I wanted to share tonight my experience as a resident who faced flooding as a result of the storms, severe storms in both August 2019 and August 2020. My concerns and questions regarding the flooding on my property have been conveyed to the Township Manager, the 4th Ward Commissioner, and the Public Works Manager via emails and phone calls, yet I continue to have several unanswered questions. I will acknowledge Mr. Berman and Mr. Siegel have responded in the past week with some updates regarding the situation. My property is adjacent to an easement, and in the past two severe storms, we have had significant flooding on our property as a result of the inability of the storm drain on Ellis Road to adequately manage the water. Last year, we had 21 inches of water in our finished basement and incurred approximately a $10,000 out-of-pocket expense. We do not have flood insurance because we do not live in a flood zone, and I have lived at this residence since 2011 and have never had any flooding until August of 2019. I was told last year that the storm was a once-in-a-100-year storm, and basically there was nothing that could be done to help manage the water because it was such a significant amount. Then came this tropical storm this year. Our entire backyard and driveway was underwater due to the runoff of the water from Ellis, as well as the water coming out of the storm drain located on the easement at the back of our property. My husband stood out in the rain for over an hour, holding the garage door down that was being forced up by the rain to try to minimize the amount of water coming into our house while I was inside with a 10-kallon shop vac filling and dumping into a basin sink for over an hour. Imagine doing deadlifts for over an hour with an 80-pound weight. I have been patient. I haven't demanded reimbursement from the township in any way. What I have asked is how the township is going to address the flooding on my property. I'm aware my property did not incur the most significant damage, however, outside of completely filling in my driveway and closing off my garage, there is nothing I can do to protect my property from the overflow of water from Ellis Road. And if I did this, it would only displace the problem from my property to someone else. Mr. Berman has communicated the results of the current inspections with me in the past week, including an email just before this meeting, and has extended an invitation for a meeting with the Township Engineer. Thank you for extending this invitation, and I will be in touch to arrange this meeting. It is my hope that the lines of communication continue to stay open, and in the future, concerns of residents like me are approached in a more empathetic manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other hands raised, Mr. Berman?
That's all there are for now.
Okay, that concludes our Citizens Forum. We will address some of those. Mr. Berman, thank you for that. Your interest in the property, we'll be voting on that later. Mr. Donae, we're looking into the legalities of the consortium and how it affects the township rules, I suspect. Our solicitor's been asked to look at that. We're just not, at this time, I think we're just not sure of the mechanism. Tax breaks need to be looked at. Municipalities, their tax breaks go to companies and consortiums. We don't pay taxes, so we have to be very careful of how we approach this, I assume. I'll defer that to the lawyers. If you have any, Mr. Holmes, if you have any other comments?
Mr. President, I was going to, in New Business, ask the Board to at least authorize us to talk with our financial advisors, PFM, about the different options that were presented to us and see what the best approach would be if we are committed to solar power. So I'll discuss that in New Business. But you are correct, there are a lot of legal issues, some very significant and some fairly discreet, that accompany a project like this.
Great, thank you. The library we'll be discussing shortly, so I'll leave those comments. They were well-written letters, and we appreciate your feelings on both sides. Last thing is the feline ordinance. I guess we'll ask the ordinance committee to take a look at that and see how it includes back in our code, specifically that section. I, for some reason, thought you couldn't let cats go free because county law superseded, but my memory's not as good as it was 10 years ago either, so. But we can look at that, and we'll have the ordinance committee take a look at that. So thank you for your comment and bringing that to our attention. I think that's so. And the school, for us to generate public space, we have the public parks. Our parks are open, and the parks can be used to take a learning pod there by parents at any time. As far as the buildings, I don't believe our township administration, old township administration building is in any state to be used by students or anyone right now. It's a state of disrepair. It's been vacant for about two years, a little over two years. I don't think that's an option. I feel for you. I have grandchildren, many of us have children. Mr. McCluskey has kids at our home, but we, it would be my wish, if I could, if I could wave the magic wand, I'd open all the schools and just go back to school and fight this thing, but I'm not the expert, there's medical reasons, but my wish and fervent hope is that we get our kids back to school, we get us back to normal, fight this thing, so hopefully we get a vaccine. But our parks are open. We have pavilions at each of our public parks during the weekdays, it's an ideal time. They're less used during the weekdays, Monday through Friday during, you know, from 8:00 to 3:00. I'm sure they're, normally the kids are in school, so there's no permitted activities during that time. So yeah, they're available to go use and set up blankets and learn, and do what you can. So by all means, we would support that. We don't have any rooms, we don't have any staff to disinfect any, like the crack or anything like that. It's in full use. That's partially open, our seniors use that. That's in great use throughout most of the day with the programs that we have there. The staff is cleaning after every use. So there's really no township space. My suggestion, if you're looking for space and the schools are staying closed for a long period of time, that those are the buildings. School district would be a resource that I would call on to see if there's public space we could use there. But thank you for that letter, and we do feel for you, both members of the Board, as well as the grandparents on the Board and the kids, all of us, any of us with children in school.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, there is a specific request in Ms. Turlish and Ms. Bragazi's letters, which are about any knowledge we have vacant storefronts where people may be able to rent space for pods for, you know, for little to no cost. If that kind of information is available in our codes department, or perhaps contact information for some of these landlords, could we invite either of these two advocates here to contact anyone in our?
My thinking is the best contact that they could do is our Haverford Partnership for Economic Development. I know that the HPED has been endeavoring to keep track of business properties that are vacant throughout the township, and they have probably a current and more coherent list than we would have here. We don't track vacancies as much as we do use and occupancies when they become used, but the HPED is tracking vacancies, so I think Jean Angel would probably be the best person that they could contact. She maintains and tries to diligently maintain a list of vacant properties throughout Haverford Township because business.
I would just go out to their website, the HPED's website, and he would get you that information. He has all that information.
They have it in various formats, so I think that is the best option. If you're looking for vacant business properties in the township, HPED would be the source.
Mr. President?
Mr. D'Amelio?
There are a couple of empty stores at the Menlo Shopping Center that are fairly large that they may be able to use.
Yep, I mean, there's-
In fact, I have a number for the management company.
Yep.
So I can provide that to them. But yeah, I mean, maybe they should check with them first, and if Adam wants to check with me on that number, that's fine as well.
Yep, they have those listings, too. Boy, if they can afford a store in that shopping center, they're-
But does that present a codes issue?
No, actually, I was just thinking that it's on there, so.
Next item, number six. Library capital improvement project. Do we want to get this rolling?
Motion to renovate the Haverford Township Free Library at 1601 Darby Road, or to relocate the Haverford Township Free Library to the site of the former Brookline School on Arlington including a motion to authorize the Township Manager to take the necessary steps to begin implementation of the decision above.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion.
Do we have to state our preference here?
Well, no, we can talk about it at some point. If we get to that point, then we'll state our preferences, but.
Mr. President? Mr. Wexler? Just a request. I know the folks who are participating remotely are having difficulty hearing, particularly the folks at the side table. If you could just, when you speak, either remove your mask or kind of get a little bit louder, that'd be very, very helpful.
Sure. Close to the mic as you-
Oh, I can get loud. Mr. Wexler, I do think at the work session last week, there was a request made by, I believe, Mr. Holmes, that Mr. Goldsmith come to this meeting to make a statement, and I see that he is online, so maybe we could begin with that.
That'd be great. Mr. Goldsmith, are you out there? I see you.
Just give it one second.
This one?
All right, there you go. We're ready when you are, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I think my name is Sir Goldsmith, I'm president, board of trustees of Haverford Township Free Library, I live at 312 Old Forest Road in Minwood. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before the Commissioners on behalf of the trustees of the library. As a matter of quick background, the Commissioners voted six years ago this month, September 8th, 2014, to provide funding for the renovation of the existing library. Obviously, during that time, much is transpired. The work on planning the renovations has been on and off several times. I'm the third library director, and I'm the third president of the Board since the Commissioners' approval. We are now in the midst of a worldwide pandemic. As we were nearing the end of architectural design for the renovations back in late 2017, 2018, we were informed of a possible new location of the Brookline School Site. As requested in February 2018, we stopped work on the renovations until it was determined whether the township would acquire the site and determine whether it was feasible, both physically and financially, for use as a public library. For many months, discussions took place about the appropriate use of the Brookline Site and the possible cost of constructing a new library there. On February 19th, 2020, at your request, I appeared before you and stated that the trustees were unanimously in favor of construction of a new library at the Brookline Site as opposed to pursuing the existing renovation plan. We believe the Brookline Site would allow us to construct a library that would provide residents with a state-of-the-art and flexible facility for the remainder of this century and up beyond. Most importantly, it would provide adequate parking, something that the current location woefully lacks and is the biggest source of complaints to our patrons and the public. Less than a month later, the pandemic brought us all to a standstill. I clearly made it a point not to raise the issue in the meantime, knowing that you and Township officials had far more urgent matters to deal with. Last week, I was asked to appear here tonight to state where the library now stands on the issue of renovation versus a new site. We still favor the Brookline Site, but fully understand that financial circumstances might not allow that to happen, and there may be other uses that are more appropriate for that site. In that case, we would recommend restarting our work on the renovations with the expectation that the Township will be committed to working closely with us to solve the parking issue. Obviously, costs have increased since we first began working on planning for renovations six years ago, and with new library director in place, we also have had the benefit of his experience and now see the need to make some modest changes and explore other opportunities that were discussed, but not included in the initial renovation plans under prior board leadership. Given that we have been on hold, we have priced out those costs or the feasibility of those opportunities. If given a go-ahead, we will do so immediately. We are not in favor of moving ahead with the renovations as-is without addressing the parking issue or the changes in costs that occurred during the six-year gap between initial approval and today's costs and needs. We believe working together in earnest would come up with plans which will be cost-effective and provide a suitable facility for the township at our current location that we can move forward together with Quick Dispatch. I'm pleased to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsmith. Any questions for?
Phil, I wonder if I could ask you, the renovations, some of the residents are describing them as mediocre Band-Aids, so I, a renovation, if we did it at the current site, is that how you looked at it, or would this be a significant improvement on the current library?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time here.
Phil, the question was, some residents have pointed out that the renovations are just a real Band-Aid on the existing library, and Dr. Hart is asking whether this would be a real improvement, or are they just Band-Aids?
Which renovations?
The proposed renovations that you just mentioned.
We think that there's, we can, well, first off, we have to address the parking issue. Without addressing the parking issue, I believe it's Band-Aids, and that will come off very quickly. But I think we want to relook at some things. Some are just moving offices from here to here, they're, make us more efficient, more cost-effective, but there are some other opportunities we think could make it better. And as one of the letter writers said, and we fully believe, we believe our current site is the best site because it is in the middle of what I call the academic campus, but given the parking, that's been an issue. So we think that these changes that we want to look at will be more than Band-Aid, will be better. It won't be as good, certainly, as building a facility from the ground up, you know, not having to deal with an old bank building and so forth, but we think we can make a good go of it, and that's what we want to take a look at. We are writing, I should say, and we have talked to our architects about some of that, and have asked them to give us a cost of what it would be to start to really look at that in earnest, but I've asked them not to do anything until we get to find out where we are with the Commissioners.
Thank you. Any other questions?
If I may add one thing, one of the problems we have also seen, some people talk about floods, our basement flooded pretty good during the past, you know, couple of months. And so one of the changes we're looking at is, can we do it without the basement and perhaps build off the second floor? That was an issue that was raised early on, I'm told. It was never taken to fruition, so that's one of the things we want to look at, and that could be very helpful to us.
The library basement's not immune to flooding as well for these big storms. Anything else?
Mr. President?
Mr. Siegel?
Yeah, I want to speak at this point in my role as Chair of the Property Committee, not as to my opinions, because over the past year or so, there have been numerous comments that have been made that intimated or said that it appeared that the Property Committee and the Township had not explored various plans and proposals. While it's admittedly, when we saw the library's architect's proposal, we were all enamored by it, but we also felt the sticker shock. I have given to the Township Manager, Mr. Berman, copies of the schematics that were prepared last fall at the request and direction of the Property Committee by Rob Fierdemundo, who many of you know as a member of the Planning Commission. He provided a large sketch sheet where the library would have taken the entire property at the Brookline Site, and Mr. Wexler and I actually spoke with him and asked him to revise that. Mr. Berman has separately plans that are in front of him that we created and never had the opportunity to present to the Board because of the pandemic. had the opportunity to present to the board because of the pandemic and because the dialogue was mostly focused on the neighbors, that shows that a two-story building with an approximately 15,000 square foot per floor footprint could be constructed on the prior location where the Brookline School is. There would still be 78 parking spots on the property, and it would preserve, I believe it's 90 by 250 feet of fields, et cetera. At the last meeting where we all met in person, my final question to Mr. Panoni in anticipation of presenting that schematic was, if we had a simpler plan, would it cost less? And Mr. Panoni agreed that it would, but we never went further. What I see now that Mr. Berman is showing is, in fact, the site plan that Mr. Fierdemundo prepared. So, for sake of this board and for the public, the property committee did explore, and this is the diagram prepared roughly a year ago or almost a year ago, that we never had the opportunity to present. So, there are alternatives, and we know that a two-story, essentially rectangular building would cost far less than the, as I will call it, building on stilts. So, I just want the commissioners and the public to understand some of the work that was done by the property committee and my comments there as to the property committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel.
Does that plan?
Can I ask, make one more comment, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Goldsmith.
If we are going to remain where we are and make the renovations, the prior plans were for us to temporarily move into the old township building. I have a concern, given the pandemic, whether that building will be appropriate. I don't know, but I'm just raising a concern. In which case, we might have to go virtual again, as we have done the past several months, while we can keep certain programs running and maybe find some other off-site locations for some of the children programming and so forth. Will probably be in a less open, personal mood than we otherwise would be if we were certainly moving to a new building or if that, the old township building facility was found appropriate, but it may be a little bit too small, given the distance requirements and so forth. I think it's an issue we seriously have to look at, so I want to raise that because it will have an impact on our operational ability.
I do have a question about the conceptual plan that Dan talked about. Could you bring that back up? This, the field, is that reducing the size of the field? Is this a reduction in field space?
No, we asked Mr. Fierdemundo to maintain the size of the field. And in fact, because it has 78 parking spaces, if we were concerned, the last row of parking spaces could be eliminated and add additional field use, it would probably cut it back to some 60-some parking spots. So, there is flexibility on that field as well, but it did preserve, it's my understanding, it's the same size or virtually within inches of it. That's what we asked him to do.
I've got to disagree. That's significantly smaller than the current field. The current field is about half the space. And what we're showing up there, the field is about a third of that area.
I do. I agree with that.
I just have a question, and maybe Dr. Hart can answer this best. What's the, you know, the library has several events that can draw pretty big crowds, two or three times, four times a year. What's the off-street parking like in that neighborhood?
It's, there's not a lot of off-street parking. It becomes a problem now. The Lutheran Church on Brookline Boulevard during the pandemic hasn't had as many events, but they typically do have a lot of things. Parking on Brookline Boulevard becomes an issue for neighbors as it is. If you had a large event, it would be difficult in the area.
More so than where it is now?
Well, more, I think typically the library now, when they have events, they are in the weekend or they're at night. So, there is typically parking, at their current location, there's typically parking near the middle school or on the streets. I think, you know, if they had events, if we moved it to Brookline and we're saying that there's 100 cars coming, I think it would be a...
So, both sites have parking issues?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I was on the library. I don't think there's more than, their gala at the library was the only event that probably had more than 100 people. So, they're big events. They've held at Lanark and other places for huge events, so it's not like there, 100 cars would be a stretch. We only have 14 spots at their big events now, so.
Well, I mean, Drag Queen, Storytime, Drew.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Mr. D'Amelio.
Mr. Siegel, are you sure? You said that that field, why is there a difference? Are you positive that it's the same size? Dan?
I couldn't hear the question.
Mr. D'Amelio is asking whether you're sure about the size of the field and trying to understand the discrepancy with what the other commissioners have said.
The request that we made, and I'm trying to find a good aerial view as we speak, but the request that we made of Mr. Fierdemundo was to maintain the field, and I'm just trying, as I try, I just am not getting the satellite view to see what it shows, but I'm trying to from my house here.
Mr. Panoni, see those plans?
No, everything was stopped in February when we were going to try to address all of this, and we got those plans probably somewhere, I'm going to say Thanksgiving to Christmas. I don't remember when exactly, but that would be my best estimate.
What's the size of the field without this new plan? And what's the size of the field now?
What I'm saying is that the diagram we're looking at...
It looks smaller.
It's definitely smaller.
I'm just trying to be fair with Dan. Where is the difference? I mean, what's the size? Do we know the size?
I don't have the exact dimensions.
Dimensions of it? I mean, can we find out? I don't know. I mean, I just don't know how there's such a, because it does look smaller to me.
Yeah, no, it definitely looks small. I got it up on Google Maps now, so. Looks like there's one extra row of parking. There's two rows of parking, without looking at his drawing.
And Bill, just to go back about the parking, when we got, had tested one in February and March, when it was discussed about library parking, they said that if you were to build a new library, you should have 90, at this size, you should have 90 to 100 spots. So, there are obviously times when you need that much parking. It's...
I'm trying to see in the picture behind you, the field is more than half of that. Can I map up the Google Map?
Can you bring up the Google Map, please? And you can see that that field is, there is no way that you can put the square footage of that building that they're talking about and then three rows of parking and have the field the same size. It's just not possible.
Well, I think in Mr. Siegel's diagram, it looked like the building was closer to the street as well.
I understand, but still, you got to, you could fit a row...
But is that...
It also goes to the edge of the property. It looks like it's been reconfigured. That may make up some of the space, because if you look at that overhead picture, you see how much of it is taken by, I guess, is that a basketball court or is that parking?
That's what I was about to say. If you just, yeah, if you look at the row of parking, you're talking about having four rows of parking and then a building, and you're not moving that line back? It's just not, there's four rows of parking.
It looks like you've gained the square footage of the basketball court for green.
Still, even if you did that...
That's 90 by 54.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, this exercise right now that we're going through isn't, has another purpose, and that's to demonstrate that we don't have, we're being asked to make a decision tonight about whether or not we do Brookline based on one rendering of, and correct me if I have it wrong, was it $18 million, $17 million to build the library on that site and with covered parking and basically most of the first floor unusable? And we never looked at other options. This is the first I'm hearing of this option tonight, and it seems to me that if somebody could design something like Dan showed us a couple of minutes ago, even if that doesn't preserve the fields exactly as they are, it sounds like the flexibility to be able to do that. I'm troubled by the fact that the decision that we're supposed to make tonight is based upon one conceptual design that we saw back in, I don't know when it was, I guess it was February. And, you know, the fact that we are now, you know, we're now presented with another possibility, which means there could be a third possibility, which means there could be a three-story library as opposed to a two-story library, you know, to me is why we should be making sure we have good data before we make a choice like we're making. But that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I have to agree with Commissioner Holmes on this right now. I think we want to get it right. If we need to get more information, I mean, let's be aggressive and get that information.
I mean, I think, we've talked about this at length at the work session last week, and, you know, we've had a lot of public meetings about this. We've had a lot of conversations with it, and I think, you know, at various points, various members of this board made promises to that neighborhood that the field would not be touched. And I think there's members of this board that have said that. And we could have, you know, 20 more designs, and that just goes to the fact of what I talked about last week, that when we got the number of, and I don't think it was 17 or 18 million, Commissioner Holmes, I believe it was 29.
I thought 29 was knocking down the old library and building a new one on its site.
No, 29, 29 was the estimate for Brookline. So, when we got that...
Well, anyway, I wasn't in favor of that, and I hated that building design, so.
Right. And some of the designs that you suggested would be taking the field. And I think there's enough members of this board who would not want to touch the field to the point where that combined with the 29 million, at least for me, in my opinion, made it to the point where we need to make a decision to just move and to help the library renovate its existing building, because it was ready and scheduled before we got the Brookline building. And I said, as I said last week, I thought it was important that we did our due diligence to explore this idea, but to say that we haven't done our due diligence to explore that site under existing conditions of what a majority of this board is willing to do is just incorrect. And so, if the majority of this board at this point wants to move forward with the renovation, we should not continue to hold up the library from renovating, which is all we're doing. And this could go on for another two years, and it is my belief that we would end up back at the exact same spot where the majority of this board would decide it is because of costs, because of other factors, we should renovate at the existing site. And that is why I will vote the way I will tonight.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes?
I just want to, I don't know what due diligence we did on other options at the Brookline site. I saw one. I'm just seeing this for the first time tonight. And I don't mean to put anybody else on the spot, but raise your hand if you saw any other potential library design or data, other than that thing that was shown to us in February.
But again, that design came in as it did because the request was made to not touch the size of the field and still meet the parking requirements that we did.
That wasn't the only thing that could possibly be done without changing the field. We don't know. We could go three stories. We haven't seen anything else.
Yes, well, wait a second. We commissioned our Panoni to do a, to not touch the field and to give us what we would need to get 78 parking spots or 70, 78? Or to give us the parking that was necessary that we needed and have the square footage that was necessary and not touch the field. That's what we commissioned Panoni to do, and Panoni gave us the number at 29 million. If, I mean, I don't know what else, what else we want here. If now we're talking about reconfiguring the field, I have no, I don't want any part of reconfiguring that field. That field is green space, it is recreational use, and it's going to, and if it's up to me, I want it to remain exactly as it is. This is what we did. We asked Panoni to give us, to give us two different plans, one of renovating and the cost, and it came back at 12 million. And we did this. We have been doing this for six years. We need to make a decision, and you have it all right in front of you.
And back in March, we said that we would vote at the next board meeting on what we would do. And I know there was a delay, but I believe if we continued to push this off, it could be a year, it could be two years, it could be three years, so let's just get it done.
Mr. President?
Mr. Wilson?
I would concur with Commissioner Berkowski and Leva and Connor, Quinn, as well said. I think we'll be in the same place in another year if we continue to discuss this. We've discussed this at length, we've had public comment, we've gotten the numbers. The numbers are, I think, prohibitively expensive. That doesn't deter me from moving the library. What deters me from moving the library is, I think the current location is the best location for the library, given that the middle school and the high school are right there. It's a central point for students to gather. So, I favor renovating the existing library and at the same time simultaneously trying to find ways to solve the parking issue by, might be buying a neighbor's property, whatever it might be, in the next year or two, but solve the parking that way. So, Mr. President, I would move that we renovate the existing library, work with the library board to try to solve the...
We already have the motion up there.
No, but it's two motions. It's either or. So, I'm moving that we renovate at the existing location and that we work with the library board to solve the parking problem simultaneously.
I agree. That'll be...
We'll get a cost of what that was...
Wait, can I?
There's a motion on the floor, Mr. President. That'd be a second. There's not a second.
Mr. President?
Is that to amend the motion that we're debating?
Well, the motion is, it's two parts. It's either or.
Right. If I could interject, I think we're trying to get a decision, as you just stated, whether we're going to renovate or do the new building. And we're saying the same thing, just in a different way. I personally would like to get, we've got two vacant buildings in this township. I think we're at a point after six years, this to me is either a go or no go. We give the direction to the library. Once we make a decision, we authorize the township manager to take the necessary steps to begin the bid process, get solicit bid documents and do all the bidding process that needs to go along, whichever decision is made. And then, once that's done, that opens us up to take care of the vacant buildings in the manner that they need to be taken care of. Right now, we have two vacant buildings sitting in this township. I think it's time. We've delayed too long. We've got two huge vacancies. The old township building, which we were holding, you know, for the renovation to use as a temporary facility, or the Brookline School, which is a very big attractive nuisance right now, and we've got to get moving. That's the way I feel. So, I'm in accordance with everything. I just want to make a decision which way we're going. The specifics, then we authorize our staff to solicit bids, do all that stuff, work with the library board to do whatever they're going to do, and under the guidance of our township manager and his staff to do that. So, that's where I think we are. I understand all the arguments. It sounds like we're doing this, but I agree with Connor. We've debated this thing for a few years. In order of magnitude, renovation is about three times the cost. So, this is basically a homeowner's decision. You going to renovate your kitchen, or you going to tear down the house and build a new kitchen with a new house? So, fairly simple decision at this point.
Mr. President?
Mr. Siegel, go ahead. I'm sorry to...
The decision that we make tonight with essentially the absence of public comment... after years of intense public comment is a decision that in my view is probably the most important decision in terms of quality of life, this township, that will impact us for the next probably 30 years or more. People move to communities because of the quality of their facilities. They move there because we have excellent parks. They move because of libraries, because they are the important things that matter, which is why Lower Marion invested $36 million and renovated all of their libraries and essentially redid, rebuilt from the inside out, Luddington. We are making what I believe is our most important decision, that if you come back here 20 or 30 years from now, and I certainly won't be on the board, and I doubt most of us will, you will see that the impact of that affects people who move into the township. It certainly impacts my ward, the fourth ward, and the fifth ward, the two wards that we know residents regularly do not use our library. In the fourth ward, where the average age of my residents is probably, is roughly 10 years older than any other ward in the township, no one uses the library, or very few people do, certainly not the older population, because we don't have parking. They go elsewhere. So this is a message to residents in the fourth ward, in the fifth ward, and in any of the far-reaching areas that says, we're going to spend money to renovate a library. We're not going to make it new and ultra-modern, we're going to do what we can, and still, when it's done, there will be 17 parking spots and one handicap spot. That's a message to the residents of this township, that this board values the opinions of a few vocal residents over what is known as the common good. The common good is the concept that what we are entrusted to do as commissioners is to do what is best for the global community. I believe renovating is not, and certainly renovating is not, because as Mr. Goldsmith said, we have not addressed the issue of parking. And so even if we are committing now, if we are committing to parking, we are committing to spending probably half a million dollars of property to take residential property and turn them into parking lots. And for people here who want to preserve the fields because they want to preserve the field, remember, this vote, if you really are committed to building parking, you are committing yourself to knocking down homes and replacing them with asphalt. This board, it's too important a decision. I don't believe we should be making it tonight, I said that last week, but if we are, we have to understand that this decision, more than any we take, will be the legacy of this board for better or for worse.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Mr. President, could I just say one thing? There was a lot of references to Mr. Panoni's charge last year of advising us on the, on the feasibility and potential cost of building a new library at the Brookline School. Can he, I, I don't recall that being presented to us as the only possible thing that could be built there and still preserve the schools. If he says that that's what his charge was and what he did, I'll accept that answer, but he's here, and rather have us recall, recollect what happened. Could Mr. Panoni opine to us as to whether or not the, what was presented to us as a design at the current Brookline School to accomplish a modern library and keep these fields? Was that the only option available?
Thank you. You trying to bring up his slides? Yeah, I think that's your presence.
Yeah, let me just share my screen, Dave. Arrows.
You have to be near the mic, Dave.
Sure, understood. I just wanted, with respect to Dave, let him get out of the way. So, so if the board remembers, back in March, I was asked to, back in January, I was asked, we were asked, to pull together three options, and I summarized them here, and this was presented, I believe, at the March meeting. One was to renovate the existing library, one was to put a new library at Brookline, and one was to put a new library at Mill Road. We do not design libraries. We did not design any of these options. We worked with the architect from, from the library, Bernardin, who had a local, had a local architect that started with, and prepared as apples and apples a presentation, as could be prepared, to compare size of the building, number of parking spaces, and costs, construction costs, soft costs, demolition costs, temporary library relocation costs, and that's the numbers. They're, getting like a background noise, I don't know if it's me. They're the three, they're the three, they're the three numbers, and I believe the board sort of put the third option off to the side. So if, if you want, I can actually scroll through, I don't know what the heck that is. Dave, how much? So, yep. This is the option that was presented as a scheme that would address 70 parking spaces, the body architect, preserve, preserve most of the field space. We did a spot check, and that, that still encroaches a little bit into the old field space, but, but not very egregiously. And come up, so it basically puts a building over the parking. And, and if you got, if the board remembers, even at the meeting, the architect Bernardin had mentioned there are other options. They could take the building and take those 70 spaces and essentially move them over and put the building down, down, and that would be, there would be savings associated with it. I believe the number they said was 3, 4 million, but that's, that's, it might not be fair for me to say that. It certainly didn't cut the building costs in half, but there were, there were a reduction in costs. So that dialogue, Commissioner Holmes, that, that was a discussion in March, the Bernardin architects were here, had offered that.
Dave, when you say you're, you're dropping the building down and moving the 70 parking spots, you're taking away the fields.
Right, right. And that's what Bernardin mentioned, too. I mean, they were very open about it, there wasn't.
Yeah, yeah.
You basically, you basically take that, make it a one, take everything, put it on the first floor, take those 70 spaces and shift them over.
Right, and then you lose all the field space.
Right.
Okay.
I know it was a while ago that, that didn't, if that answers your question.
Well, I think so, yeah. I mean, your, 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 your very first page there, I mean, you're just based on, based on basically an intelligent projection of your per-square-foot cost of building a new library. Is that right?
Yep, yep. With, with, and collaborate, very collaborate with Bernardin. Again, we don't present, we're not architects.
Right.
So, so the, the square foot numbers, they were, they were wonderful, this, you know, Phil and the architect were easy to work with. And by the way, all these numbers were vetted with them, of course.
I appreciate that. Thanks for the info. I found it, obviously, in my emails as well, now that you've tracked down the date. Was there ever a discussion, Mr. Panoni, of a three-story building? And would that change anything?
I, I don't, I can't, I don't remember, Larry. And I mean, you really have to go back with the architect and collaborate with them to see what the difference would be.
Well, but generally speaking, I'm asking you if, when you described how you could come down to, you could, you could take the parking out from underneath the building and just build two functional floors, you said there might be a couple million dollars difference there. Are you still talking about 500, 550, $600 a square foot for construction of a new library anywhere?
I mean, it was sick, we used 650, we used 650 at the Mill Road site because that was a tough site. You're, again, you're getting a little bit, I'm an architect. I mean, the architect is using, using the 560, 570 a square foot for a bottom-up new building that has a little bit of a premium when you put the parking, has a premium when you put parking underneath because of fire issues and, and safety issues. So you're, I, I, I say this very respectfully again, I mean, you're, I know you're not going to take 500 and turn it into 250, the renovation number.
Right.
By, by moving the parking.
Right, right, and that's, and that's okay. I don't think anybody expects a new building to cost the same as renovating an old building. And if we were to, if we were to build 36,000 square feet, and we're going to do that in three stories instead of two, may narrow this, you know, it'd give us more floors in the building, but less, obviously take up less space, you may be able to squeeze parking in there. But that said, any commitment to build a 36,000-square-foot new library is going to cost us north of $20 million?
I think that's fair to say.
I mean, as you said, 560 isn't going to turn into 250, but 560 is not likely to turn into 400 either, right?
Yep.
Okay. I appreciate the info, and I, not, not my intention to put you on the spot or catch you on anything, honestly, it was to re-educate myself on this. So I appreciate that.
And I'd do the same thing. I mean, I sent it over to Dave just to, just in case it came up.
Great.
Any else?
Nope. Any other questions for Mr. Panoni? No, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Refreshing our memories.
Any comments, questions?
Mr. President, I just, I do, like Commissioner Siegel, we, I, I think we have to recognize this decision as, as having a long-term impact, and I do agree with Commissioner Siegel that we have to take, we have to consider the entire township when we're, when we're making decisions like this. So it, I'm not going to try to cable this resolution, A, I'm not even sure I'd get a second, but even if I did, I just, I don't think that, that's, that's worth the effort. I believe that we should build a new library. As of right now, the only place we could build that new library, practically speaking, is on the Brookline site. I think we should examine every option that we have, be able to do that, and try to do what's right for the neighbors there, but at the same time understand that at the end of the day, it is about what is right for the township and not just, not just particular neighborhood. And I, we all have to answer to our constituents and to our neighbors, so I'm not suggesting this is an easy thing to do, or that it's wrong for a commissioner to take very seriously the concerns of their own constituents and the very, the local concerns associated with any kind of construction project like this. But I think this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing, and I think it would be a mistake for us to, to forego this opportunity, especially having been given a site for basically a dollar, which a lot of us thought when it first came up was a real answer to some prayers. So I'm not going to try to stop this vote, but I'll let you know in advance that my vote will be cast for building at Brookline and examining all possible options to do so, and try to do what's right for the neighbors, but most important, do what's right for the township.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments before we call this?
Yeah, Mr. President, this motion, I think, is confusing. I don't know how we task our township manager with pursuing two different, totally different approaches. It's, it's either or, it's not.
No, you have to pick one.
You have to pick one.
We're going to, like, two people running for one spot.
It was actually supposed to be two motions.
Okay, okay, well, I didn't understand.
So the, the second motion, after we decide at number six, there should be, 6A should be authorized the township manager to solicit bids for whatever we decide.
Actually, Bill, can I clarify that? Because I think it was designed this way on purpose, because the goal, if you put the motion up for Brookline and it doesn't pass, you then have to have a motion up for renovating at the existing library site. That might not pass either, and I don't think what was in front of us tonight included the option of doing nothing unless we tabled. So I, the motion, to me, I think is correct, that we only have two options here.
Do we state our preference then?
Build at Brookline. Yeah, I mean, I think this is no different than if two people were vying for one spot in the zone.
Okay, that makes sense.
And that, that's, and that's the expectation. Correct me if I'm wrong, did anybody have a different expectation?
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
That makes sense now.
Yeah. Right, I appreciate that you were reading it, Mr. Lewis, to just say, we're authorizing him to do one or the other, whatever he decides or comes down the line, but no, we have to make the decision tonight. What's before us is this or that.
Yes.
And that's it.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Berman, would you please call them?
Mr. D'Amelio.
Renovate.
Mr. Aliva.
Renovate.
Mr. McCluskey.
Renovate at 1601 Darby Road.
Mr. Siegel. I'm sorry, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Relocate to Brookline.
Mr. Lewis.
Renovate and simultaneously look to solve the parking issue that's been longstanding.
Not on the motion.
Not on the motion, but kind of understood.
It's a comment.
Mr. Quinn.
I would say to, or to renovate.
Dr. Hart.
Renovate at Darby Road.
Mr. Holmes.
Build a new library at the site of the former Brookline School.
Mr. Wexler.
I would build a new library, I'm thinking 50 years out, but. Motion to renovate the library passes by six to three on the Board of Commissioners. I'd also then entertain a motion to authorize the township manager to take the necessary steps to begin implementation and bid specifications with the library board to implement that decision.
So moved.
Motion there, second?
Second.
Motion made in second.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I amend that motion to include, that that implementation includes parking options?
You moved the, you moved it, I just read it, you moved it, so it's your, it's your motion.
I'll go with that.
So can, if, why don't you make that amendment, Mr. Aliva, I'll approve it, and Connor will second the amendment.
Okay, I, I would amend that motion to include that we look at parking in, in that, as we're moving to implement the decision above.
Could we be more specific than look at parking? Can we, can we authorize him to take the steps necessary to address and perhaps solve the parking issue?
Take the necessary steps to address and resolve the parking issue at the, at the.
I accept your change to my motion.
Okay.
I think you, can we just, can we just make?
Yeah, I think he needs to be sent in.
Because if it's not, then it's going to, I'm going to request that it stay my motion. But when we say that we're going to look into parking, we're not going to hold up the library from doing its work in order to push forward and Mr. Berman to do its work to push forward a renovation. We're going to try to address the parking and continue to try to address the parking, but we're not going to hold up the renovation until the parking is solved to perfection, right?
The first motion is not contingent upon the second. The parking is correct.
I'm asking Mr. Holmes his understanding.
Right, it is not my intention to add parking to slow down the renovation. It's my intention that Dave Berman is authorized to pursue parking remedies and solutions at the same time that he is working with the library on the rest of this project. Basically, I want to add parking to, as a crucial ingredient to this, to this project. Now, I don't mean that it, that, it doesn't mean that he has to solve parking before anybody can start any work, but I do think, and I think Commissioner Lewis said this in his own vote on the first motion, that that is. in his own vote on the first motion, that that is important, and we heard Dr. Goldsmith say it, so I, I want to make sure that we recognize that the renovation of, of the library at its current site must ultimately address the parking issue, whether it's the day after it opens, or whether it's the day before anybody breaks ground, but it has to be part of, I, I, we want to authorize our township manager to make that part of, of the, of, of.
This project.
How we proceed.
I, I agree. I agree that we need to.
I think we're formally resolving that we're putting an objective in front of our township manager.
Great. So, I accept that amendment. And you seconded it, Connor, so you don't.
Yeah, I accept it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Make it clear. Nope. Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you, everyone. But I think we've made some progress finally. Number eight, the approval of minutes.
Is he doing your update? Are you doing your update, Dave?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the top of the other page. Township manager update?
Yeah, very quick update.
Sorry about that.
Sure, hey, no problem. I would have gladly moved on, but that's fine. The, the quick update is, yes, there was a lot of storm damage from Chalkwell Storm Isie, Isie AS?
Isaiah.
Thank you. I tried to avoid it. Yes, there was a lot of damage, there were a lot of homes that had flooding, there were some trees that were down, homes damaged by fallen trees, lots of problems, and we did circulate a postcard, as the board knows, to invite folks to send us their damage through either calling the township or filling out the damage assessment form online, and we've had hundreds of folks fill out the form, and we would like to extend an invitation for those folks to send pictures to info@havetpw.org. We really need those pictures so that we can upload them to the state's website. We're filling out forms just the way you're filling out forms. This is going to be a virtual damage assessment, and our deputy emergency management coordinator, Steve Poole, is filling out those forms, and so it's a ton of work, but we encourage, if you have not done so already, please send us photos of the damage or other evidence of the damage that you are providing to us. That's very important. We're collecting that information, we're plotting it on a map for our own uses here at the township, we're sharing it with the township engineer as part of his analysis of things that may be feasible that we can do to avoid repeat occurrences of what we've had, whether it's physically feasible, or as Mr. Goldsmith stated, financially feasible, because there are questions about, the woman on Prescott had some questions, Frederick, Waterview, Winfield, and so we're going to be looking at that very methodically in the coming months, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Berman.
Mr. President, real quick.
Just a quick, go ahead.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Good question. Give me an update on the remediation of the asbestos at Brookline School, when it's going to start, do you know yet?
Yes, that's a great question. We had established a pre-construction meeting with the contractor who was awarded the work, and we're working on finalizing some documentation, some insurance requirements and what have you. I'll have to email you when that pre-construction meeting is scheduled.
Thank you. Email all of us now.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
As, as everyone knows, in the last meeting, I was grateful that Dave was doing these comprehensive study on this, on the flooding issues. How far away are we? And I just want residents to understand that, that these things, these studies take time, and we have not forgotten about the flooding that occurred in, in their areas throughout the township, and specifically in my, in my ward, as you know, Dave.
Virginia, Upland.
Virginia, Upland.
Maryland, yep.
Maryland, some of these areas, and Windsor Park Lane, which really never experienced flooding of that magnitude before. But I mean, I, I don't mean to put pressure on you, but I just want to give an update as where, when we might be able to get that study, and will we receive it, I guess, prior to a meeting, so we can discuss it.
Dave, Dave actually gave a great answer. I mean, we've, we've probably got at least 12 to 18 locations. I've met with some residents, sometimes with commissioners, sometimes with staff, some of my staff has met. It's going to be a solid six to eight weeks to pull it all together, and, and Dave's point about methodical is very important. We don't want to miss.
Right.
We've, we've taken great pains, we take a good thorough list, we go over with the township, there'll, there'll be, there'll be an add-on here and there, so, and yes, what I, what we've done in the past, we'll prepare it, we'll, we'll give it to Dave and, and his staff to look at, make sure we're all on the same page, and, and you typically distribute it to the board. How you want to disseminate it publicly is, is, I guess, really up to you guys, if you want to discuss it in a meeting, or, or handle it with staff, but that, but it's a solid, it'll be a solid six to eight weeks to pull it together properly.
Thank you. I'm glad we're doing it. Dave, you sent out the, an email about how, how residents can, you did send this, that to us, so how they can upload those pictures to you?
I did, and I'll send it again.
Can you send it again?
Sure thing. It's, it's on our website, under the news page at the top, there's a form, there's a, there's a button for residents, and there's another button for non-residential properties, if there's a business or a church or something like that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. You're getting, you are getting photos from existing applicants.
Lots of folks have sent photos, but we have more, we have more people who have responded with, to the damage assessment survey than we do people who have sent us photos.
So, you have, you have their information to follow up with them directly?
We do, we do. It's, it's a process, but yes, we're going to follow up directly with the ones that have not provided photos.
Thank you. Item number eight, the approval of minutes. Mr. D'Amelio.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August the 10th, 2020.
Second. Motion made in second. Any questions, additions, deletions, comments on the meeting, on the minutes? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item number nine is the approval of warrants.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move that we approve warrant number nine of 2020, totaling, sorry, 2020, totaling $3,777,931.95, comprising the general and sewer fund payroll for August 20th of 2020 in the amount of $632,946.60, the general and sewer fund payroll for September 3rd, 2020, in the amount of $614,149.99, general fund disbursements number nine of 2020 in the amount of $1,419,397.73, sewer fund disbursements number nine of 2020 in the amount of $568,969.25, a community development block grant fund disbursement for nine of 2020 in the amount of $114,964.69, capital project fund disbursement number nine of 2020 in the amount of $425,493.49, the credit card statement ending August 27th, 2020 in the amount of $2,010.20.
Second. Motion made in second.
Mr. President, these warrants have been reviewed by our township auditor. Any questions that his review raised were raised with our staff and answered to his satisfaction. He's recommended we approve these warrants, as do I.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 10, the 2021 minimum municipal obligation. Mr. Holmes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I move we accept and certify the 2021 minimum municipal pension obligation for the police and non-uniform defined benefit plans and non-uniform defined contribution plans.
Second.
Motion made in second.
This is an exercise we go through each year, required by state law, for us to, to quantify and, and authorize what is called the minimum municipal obligation for our pensions. We do not opt to use the minimum obligation, but instead use the, our actual, the municipal obligation based upon the market value of the assets, and that is a number that we put in both of the obligations, but it does, this reflects the move by the state, gosh, now, maybe two decades ago, to allow people to smooth the effects of downturns in the, in the stock market and in investments. That is not something we've taken advantage of, but instead have done the more fiscally responsible and conservative thing of, of filling our obligation based upon the market value of the assets. So, I ask that everybody approve the minimum municipal obligation, but I assure everybody that we will pay more than the minimum.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 11, ordinance P-18, 2020, it's traffic second reading ordinance.
Mr. President.
Mr. Aliva.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P-18, 2020, 2020, authorizing and rescinding traffic restrictions on the following highway. Sticker parking only, rescind Park Road South Side between Darby Road and Lansdowne.
Second. Motion made in second. Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 12, ordinance P-19, 2020.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Move we adopt first reading of ordinance number P-19 of 2020 by adopting the Second Amendment to the lease agreement with Unisite Omnipoint PA Tower Venture LLC pertaining to the ground lease for the cell tower located at One Hilltop Road, Haverford Township, Pennsylvania.
Second. Motion made in second by Mr. Aliva. Any questions on this? I think we talked about it last week. Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 13 is ordinance P-20, 2020, this is a first reading traffic.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P-20, 2020, rescinding establishing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times. Rescind Cherry Lane south from Winfield Drive to a point 100 feet west thereof, Cherry Lane south from St. Dennis Lane to Poplar Road. Establish Cherry Lane south from St. Dennis Lane to Winfield Drive.
Second. Motion made in second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes. Item 14, resolution 2183-2020.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
To make a motion to adopt resolution number 2183-2020 to the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, Delaware County, hereby adopted, submitted to Department of Environmental Protection for its approval as an update of the official plan of the Township of Haverford, the above referenced Act 537 Plan Update. The Township of Haverford hereby assures the Department of the complete and timely implementation of the said plan as required by law. Section 5, Pennsylvania Sewage Facility Act as amended.
Second. Made in second by Commissioner Aliva.
I, I, Mr. President, I was not here for the, for the work session, but this obviously interests me, so did you discuss this?
Yes, this is an annual thing that we, not, well, we, it's required by law, but Mr. Pinoni can explain it the best.
Just real quick, I'm sorry, thank you for your.
That's okay.
Understanding.
So, so you've probably read about it in the paper, Delcour is looking to transfer our assets to Aqua.
Yes.
Pennsylvania.
Yes.
We are a customer, an indirect customer of Delcour for one-third of our township. Anything that drains to Darby Creek, RHM, ultimately goes to Delcour. The, the, the transfer has a requirement of Act 537 Sewage Facilities Planning, and what we're doing here is we're saying that we are, we are going to prove our part, our small part, of that planning for the transfer of Delcour to Aqua. Doesn't affect how we do business.
Right, that's what I was, thank you.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
I'd vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 15, resolution 2187, 2020. Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution number 2187 of 2020 by establishing criteria for real estate assessment appeals.
Second. Motion's made in second. Any questions?
Just, this was discussed last week, and what our township finance director has described to us are two very, two very specific formula, alternative formula that are used for determining whether or not the township should appeal particular assessments on properties where we feel the assessment is, is wrong, and, and wrong to a significant factor. And if I, I could read the criteria into the record, these are, if, if people feel that's worthwhile. I don't, I think we discussed it last week, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's in the body of the resolution, so.
And I recommend we adopt the resolution.
Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Yes.
Item 16, resolution 21882020, Greenbrier Lane, preliminary final subdivision.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Demilio.
To make a motion to adopt resolution number 21882020 approving the preliminary final minor subdivision plan for Sleepy Valley Holdings LLC for the vacant property located on Greenbrier Lane, Haverford Township, Delaware County, known as DC Folio Square Foot Parcel to create two lots as follows. Lot 1 containing 16,022 square feet, and Lot 2 containing 15,691 square feet. The subject property is within the R5 zoning district and is located in the first ward. The offered said plans were prepared by Yon, Yon Engineering, did I say that right? Yon Engineering LLC Collegeville PA dated April 3, 2020, and last revised on July 30, 2020, subject to the recommendations of the planning commission.
Second. Motion made in second by Commissioner Lewis.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
I think that that plan by the, the recommendations of the planning commission had to do with stormwater management issues, correct? Could you just come up and comment about that?
There are many stormer management facilities that are going to be on, well, there's two, one on each property. They will be, they're intended to help the stormwater issues be, mitigate more than what's currently there, which is nothing, the property's undeveloped. So the creation of these facilities are intended to mitigate the stormwater to be less than what is there now, even after the houses are built.
Just a question is, the water coming down Westgate Road. Where will, how will that be? Did you see that? Or no? The, the water that comes down, a lot of water comes down Westgate Road, right to Greenbrier. Will that help with that?
Yes, there are two sewage beds behind at, at the rear portion of the property that should help mitigate some of that stormwater.
Okay. You say so.
Well.
I hope so.
You could, Dave could put it further, I'm sure, but that is the intention of the ordinance.
We need to hit the microphone, Dave, thanks.
The ordinance doesn't go offsite, the ordinance is onsite, and the ordinance will take pre-development runoff, this is ordinance we passed 15 years ago, and reduce it when it's post-development. And I, I believe that's what Kelly's trying to remind you of, so, so after the properties are developed with the houses and driveways, the runoff volume, there's, the first initiative volume gets captured and put underground, and the sec, and then the runoff rate is decreased. So it's, that's, that's our ordinance, that's what our ordinance does for new development.
But to the extent that that property contributed in any way toward any flooding, there is some amelioration of that property's contribution to the water.
Yep, yep, even if something as macro as Haverford Reserve and Low Shopping Center, down to the, the micro things like two new houses, yes, we have rate reduction now with, with our current ordinance.
Very good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Item number 17.
Mr. President.
Mr.
Motion to authorize the township manager to take all necessary steps to explore the acquisition of property at 1744 Vermont Road for the purposes of extending the Darby Creek Trail.
Second. Motion made in second.
Mr. Kerr spoke pretty eloquently about the importance of this piece of property.
I can't hear.
In your mic, please.
I think Mr. Kerr spoke rather eloquently about the importance of this piece of property in extending the trail and the importance of the trail to Haverford Township. We had an opportunity to possibly purchase the, the property six years ago, it, unfortunately, we weren't able to get an easement, and I think at this point, we, it's important to move forward to try to, to secure an easement to extend the trail from McDonald Field to Westchester Pike, and then hopefully, ultimately, to the crack.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I just jump in for a second?
Yes.
If, if we're looking to, you know, to explore the possibility of purchasing something, you know, that's something that we can talk about in an, in an executive session, and my suggestion would be that, you know, we, we leave it at the motion that we're going to explore it and not, not further publicly discuss this until we've had an opportunity to discuss it in a work session.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne.
That could have been, I think you mean Jim. That's what I meant to say, yeah, I did, yeah, sorry.
Mr. President.
Yeah, tired.
Mr. Lewis, if that's the case, I defer to our solicitor, but I would recommend that we do a special work session then, because time is of the essence. We did discuss this at the work session last week, so.
Yeah, I think he's trying, I think what he's trying to say is we shouldn't be discussing this.
Right.
Discussing the acquisition of property outside of executive session.
Okay.
So if we want to vote on this.
Well, my suggestion wasn't in an executive session, so we could even do that by, by conference call or Zoom or some other way if we can't get a special meeting, but I think we should talk about it outside of the public if it's something we're hoping on negotiating later on.
Okay, Mr. President, I suggest we do that at the conclusion of this meeting, that we go into work session to discuss it. Thank you.
Correct. So, Jim, are we voting on this then, or no?
Well, what's, yeah, I mean, I, we can't authorize, I mean, we need to have a debate about what, to what extent we're authorizing Mr. Berman and what steps he can take with regard to this property of 1744 Vermont Road. And until we have that discussion, and our solicitor's telling us that that discussion should take place in an executive session, because it satisfies the rules regarding executive session, that we should not vote on this motion, is that right? Mr. Solicitor?
It, it would make sense, I mean, it would make sense to, you know, we could have a special meeting, or we could have a work session quickly, or I keep saying work session, I mean executive session.
Executive session.
Quickly, and then vote on it, you know, at another meeting or, or another time, but I don't think that we want to be in a position where we're, we're talking about purchasing a property and have all the ramifications of that out in the public until we've had a chance to, to knock it around a little bit in an executive session.
Well, then I would maybe suggest that we go in an executive session.
Yeah, can we go?
Right, right now.
Yeah, can we do that?
So we can vote on this.
I would, I would do that, yeah.
Time is of the essence, and we don't.
Great.
A little jern for an executive session.
I'm sorry, Jim and Dan, we're gonna have to dial you in via conference call and have you mute yourselves.
Okay.
All right, so you'll have to use yourself, your telephones or cell phones and call my cellphone.
Okay.
Okay. We're back online. Thank you.
He's there, his, his camera's turned off, that's all.
Yeah. All right, thank you, we're back, we just met in executive session on a real estate matter. Item 17 was inadvertently put on the agenda, should not have been, so I am removing it from the agenda. Is all in favor of that?
Aye.
Item 18, zoning hearing board application.
Mr. Chairman.
Demilio.
Make a motion to authorize the township solicitor to represent Haverford Township in the matter of Upper Darby Township zoning hearing board case number 8-2 of 2020, proposed Starbucks 5001 Township Line Route, Druxel Hill PA.
Motion made in second. Any questions on this? This is in my ward. This is at the CVS site at Vermont in Township Line. Proposed use back in 2014, the Upper Darby zoning hearing board granted the approval of the land development and their land, and their community development, which they use the county, I think, with the stipulation that the building would be a medical building, and it would not be a food establishment, was specifically stated in the land development approval and approved by their zoning board. At this point, they now, the owner of the property, Piazza Motors, Piazza Family Resources, I think they call it, is now proposing to put a Starbucks there, which is a food establishment. So they're looking for two variances. One is to change the use of the property from a business or medical to a food purveyor, and the second ordinance would allow them to put dumpsters less than 50 feet from residential properties, because they would have to put a dumpster on the edge of the property adjacent to a home, or homes, that are beside, behind the property. So this motion is to have Mr. Byrne represent us at the Upper Darby zoning hearing board to express our interest. I have about 200 residents that have signed petitions against this, and they're looking for us to, to work with them to change the use. The, the big, the big problem is, if you guys have probably seen, or the Starbucks traffic issue on Westchester Pike and New Ardmore Road in Brumall, the traffic coming out of their car, drive-through business severely impacts the residential street there, goes all the way down and causes traffic jams. If you haven't been on Township Line in a business morning, there's a Dunkin' Donuts at Old Lane that has the same problem. It was designed to hold eight cars in a call queue, it spills out into Township Lane and shuts down the right-hand lane of the two-lane highway going northbound in the mornings.
That also happens.
Yep, so for that reason, I've asked, I'm asking this board to allow Mr. Byrne to represent us at the township, at the Upper Darby Township zoning hearing board. So any questions that you would have for? Thank you very much, please call the roll.
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Item 19 is contract award.
President, make a motion to award Darby Road Streetscape Base 2 to MOR Construction Services Inc. in the amount of $204,410, submitting the lowest responsible bid for the base contract and recommended alternatives.
Motion made in second by Dr. Hart. This is, this states it's base two, I think we've seen all the plans and happy to move on. Please call the roll.
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Item 20, purchases or payments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Aliva.
But I'd like to make a motion to award the purchase of 10 basketball systems from Recreation Resources USA, tennis square PA under Co-Stars number 14-74 in the amount of $22,075, submitting the lowest responsible quote. The system includes hole, backboard, and rim, and will be installed at Bailey Park 4, Cooper Town 2, Westgate 2, and Merwood 2. Payments from the capital fund.
Motion made in second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Motion to, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to award the purchase of playground equipment for Lanark Park under Co-Stars contract from George Eli Associates in the amount of $15,408, payments from the capital fund.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Motion to authorize the five-line pay, pay, payment for a contributor or a contribution towards Pearson for, for their foam bumper chassis for Burbank Fine Fire Company to look five, five, fire a quick women company, bird in Han, in, in, in Han, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $200,000, $1,000 balance to be paid by Burbank Fine Fire Company.
Second. Motion made in second. Any questions on this? I think we had the chief stand up here last week and explain the ownership balance or contribution towards the truck. Please call the roll.
Mr. Demilio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Item 21, agreement for ballot box.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move that we ratify a ballot box license agreement between the township of Haverford and the County of Delaware's Board of Elections.
Second. Motion made in second. This is to allow specific ballot box to be placed outside our township facility here, which will be, I think the Board of Elections providing video surveillance, we don't already have it there, what I was told by the Board of Elections, so. Do we, do we know the location at this point? It will be undercover, or?
We're meeting with them on Wednesday to discuss options for the location for the, for the ballot box.
And then it, it obviously.
It's gonna, it's gonna be here, it's gonna be in front of the administrative building, it's gonna be close to the entrance and handicap accessible and full 24-hour surveillance.
Is it something that we, because obviously, we're probably gonna use it for future elections, is there some kind of substructure that we can create so that we, because it's obviously gonna have to be bolted and somehow bolted into the concrete.
Yeah, the county Board of Elections will take care of the installation, and it will be likely bolted into the concrete out front.
So, so when we take it out, we'll, we'll have the opportunity to put it back in the same place, in the same location, without redoing the concrete?
That would be the intent. The agreement does not provide for those specific details, it provides for restoration of the area upon removal, so we'll work through that, and if that's an option, we will make that happen.
Be nice to have it be reusable, so we don't have to.
Oh, no question about it.
Care of the concrete for each election.
Yep.
I assume that ballot, that it's gonna be something that we're, we're gonna have in the.
Yeah, no doubt about it.
Agreement is explicit that, that the licensee, which is.
The county.
Not us, pays for the placement, any damage associated with the placement, the use, and the removal. But sure, we end up having, creating an anchor for it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it just makes sense to.
Well, it would be great if, if, you know, the next time we have to worry about this, there might be some faith in our postal again, and all those.
I think, I think the mail.
Locations that exist all over the world, all over the country, but you're right, I mean, for the, whatever, we, I mean.
We could permanently do it, it'd be great.
It's gonna, it's gonna be permanent, I think, I mean, I would expect that it would be.
I, I, to the, to the extent that we're gonna have the ballot box for mailing, I, I agree, what form and format it's gonna be after they get through their first go-round.
Yeah.
Could be a different type, size box.
So, so where are these ballot boxes going to be?
Just one.
One?
One in each municipality.
One in each municipality.
So every municipality is doing this?
Yes.
Yes.
I can't speak for every municipality.
Pretty, but they're, they're being offered, they're being, the county is making the offer to put them in each municipality, each municipality
Each municipality has to make a choice.
Okay, so I understand this correctly, and again, I wasn't here. I know you've probably discussed this. It's only gonna be there, but no one's really monitoring it unless there's an issue because of the cameras. Is that right? How are we gonna know if there's an issue?
The box is placed outside. It's emptied every day by the county, and so we'll know if there's an issue when that occurs, and we also have 24-hour surveillance out front of the building.
Yet the county monitors, not us. Not our responsibility to monitor the box.
What cameras are we, they're using our cameras?
No, they're.
They can install their own camera. We also have our cameras. We have both.
Each of these locations.
It'll look like a bird feeder, so you won't know, you know, where it is.
And anyone can throw their ballot in there. I mean, they're, right? Doesn't matter what ward you are, it just doesn't matter.
Right, it's for the municipality.
So, are they gonna have this in other polling places? Like the first ward, let's say, in 1, 3?
No. This is one.
Just one.
One place where people can go mail their ballot.
To be clear, this isn't changing at 1, 3. If somebody has a mail-in ballot, they can walk into that polling place and hand it in.
Right. And that's what I prefer they do.
This is just for somebody who wants, when they get the mail-in ballot, wants to drop it off in ahead of time and put it in the ballot box.
Doesn't wanna drive.
I just have real concern about.
If they don't think that the post office is gonna get it there in time, they have this box that gets picked up daily by the Board of Elections.
I, I, I hear what you're saying. I would prefer that they, I mean, I'm doing that. I'm voting by mail-in ballot, but.
Now you have another option.
Yeah, but I don't know about security, and I'm concerned about that. I would prefer that they bring it to the polling place, but that's me.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, but, let me address your concern, Mr. D'Amelio. Each, each day, they'll know if somebody messed with one of these, messed with this box. So, if the concern is that somebody deposits their ballot on a Tuesday, and it never gets to the county, the county opens up the ballots, opens up the box Tuesday night or Wednesday morning, whenever they come, and if somebody has broken into the box, or somebody has dumped something into the box to destroy ballots or something like that, they're gonna know immediately. They're then gonna be able to watch on whatever cameras they have to see what did happen, and also have the ability then to broadcast to the township that anybody who cast their ballot on Tuesday should, you know, you know, should find out whether their ballot was destroyed.
I understand, but my concern is this crazy world out there. I mean, somebody's liable to destroy the ballot box, and all those people that thought they voted by mail-in, it's now destroyed. Doesn't matter if you got the guy's picture, or the woman's picture, no matter who it is, you just ruined all those ballots. I'll make a poor guess. I don't wanna give anybody.
Yeah, but they can do the same thing in a mailbox.
Well, no.
Exactly.
Yeah, but it's a little more secure in a mailbox.
Those are federal crimes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you hand them in at the, if you hand them in at the precincts, I think you have less of a chance of something happening. That's just my opinion.
But there's people who can't. There's people who can't get to the precinct. That's why, that's the idea behind the mail-in ballot, is if you're elderly and you can't make it on that particular day, you can drop it off a day or two ahead of time into this ballot box. That's the idea behind it.
I know the idea behind it.
Okay.
Fully aware of the idea.
Okay.
Not what I'm talking about.
Aren't they also keeping a running tally of votes that come in, so you can find out well before election day that your vote has been received by the county?
Sorry, there were a lot of people who, and I mailed my ballot in the primary, but there were people that contacted me that they didn't get, that didn't get.
Oh, it happened to me. It happened, it happened to me. I.
That's part of why the box.
That's why the box is here to alleviate the problem.
Two months prior to election, I filled in for a mail-in ballot. I never received my mail-in ballot yet online.
Some people didn't get it.
I went online and said I had gotten it.
That's a different.
No, but I.
It's just my, look, I, I, look, I mean, you know, one vote. My concerns, I'm not trying to make it difficult for people to vote. I, I wish that this wasn't a crazy world. I would prefer they be more secured in the precinct. That's all I'm saying. And you don't even know, is Upper Darby doing it, or is?
Everybody's doing it.
Pretty much everybody's.
One township, I heard. That's what I.
One other township's doing it?
No, no, no. Everybody but one.
Oh, everybody but one.
Everybody but one. One said, no, I think that was Con- Con- or Township.
Hope it goes well.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
No.
Mr. Oliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Item 22 is a continuation of the Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items. Mr. Berman, is there anybody that's raising their hand on our Zoom conference?
I am looking at the attendees, and I do not see any hands raised at this time.
We have no members of the public here other than staff. New business.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holmes.
There were two things I wanted to raise. Last week, we broke into an executive session at the end of our work session, and, but it was determined at that, in that executive session, that what we discussed back there did not need to be held within our executive privilege. That was the issue of the Township Manager and I, after having met with affected residents in the Winfield area after the August 4th flood, have, we've agreed with the residents' request that we commission a, an engineering study, particularly flooding engineer study to address different ways the township and/or the residents down there could address some of the issues to prevent the catastrophe like we had on August 4th and approximately almost to the day, a year earlier, August of 2019. And in the event that the engineering study exceeded Mr. Berman's discretionary spending amounts, I ask that the board authorize Mr. Berman to request proposals from engineers, specifically with the expertise in flood remediation and flood prevention, to study the issues in the Winfield area that we've been dealing with for a long time, and authorize him to enter into an appropriate contract. To study the apography and other issues down in the Winfield Drive area, right here below St. Dennis, where I had another major flood on August 4th, and the residents down there have asked us if we would commission an engineering study to give them advice on what the township could do and what they could do differently. Dave's not doing it. We're going out to a third party, to a, to a particular, like flooding expert. That's where, that's the expertise we're seeking, and Dave's, Panoni agrees with that. Well, we could do other particular areas if anyone asked. The one I was asking about was, was Winfield Drive.
That lady Stephanie, that woman tonight, it zoomed in, 21 inches in her basement. She's asking for the same thing to get some help. She said, Mr. Berman. So, I think.
There's been multiple studies on Winfield Drive. Army Corps done them. They go back to the 70s. We've done them. I think, not to put words in Larry's mouth, the residents want a fresh look, for lack of a better term. Flooding issues at Winfield Drive are not, are a different animal. It's very regional, as opposed to what we're dealing with in our neighborhoods, our community-type flooding. So, they're two entirely different types of studies, Steve.
I'm thinking that, but in some sections, like Windsor Park, they were flooded before.
Yeah, but very, but, yeah, but very, again, but very different, very localized. Winfield Drive is right along Cobs Creek. It's right along a thousand-acre drainage area. So, the change, the change at Windsor is gonna be very minute. It's gonna be a curb line change. An inlet failed. A pipe is clogged. The issue down at Cobs is macro. It's, it's, we got, we got Cobs Creek coming down, and it's jumping the wall at Winfield Drive. So, there are two entirely different types of things to look at, Steve.
And so, like, one way to, one analysis is whether or not we can increase the acre footage of, of, of water retention in Merwood during floods, whether or not we can reduce the flow there and stop. I mean, as Dave said, very different analysis than spot flooding where an inlet is bad or needs to be widened, or I know another area where we're doing a second pipe, and that's gonna make a big difference.
I, I think it's logical, Steve, that, like we talked about earlier, we got, we've got our dozen spots. We're gonna look at them, we're gonna look at them with Public Works, the guys that were out in boots on the ground during the storm, and we'll do that evaluation. Windsor Park's a perfect example. What changed at Windsor Park? To bring in somebody from outside to say, what changed? It's a real boots-on-the-ground study. I don't know if I'm conveying that, Steve, properly, but, but a macro Cobs Creek versus a micro, micro issue on Windsor are two different things.
So, you think that's something your firm could not do?
Oh, no, we've done it.
You think that an outside third party is gonna come back with anything different than you already?
I mean, Larry, I don't want the words in everybody's mouth. I think there's a feeling of a third set of eyes to take a look at it and see if they come up with something.
Anything different?
Yeah. I mean, I, my suggestion to Dave was that, first off, we make sure we're disseminating, we have a whole bunch of information. We have multiple studies. We can, we can help to mitigate any of the upfront costs by just giving, making sure they have all that information, whoever gets selected. There's a bit of a devil in the details. You don't want, you don't want somebody to come in and say, hey, get rid of this flooding issue by wiping out Wayne. I mean, we want a pragmatic, logical solutions, not, not turn a golf course into a basin. So. So, I talked to Dave about, you know, when he goes through an interview process and a selection process, just to make sure it's pragmatic. It's not gonna help anybody here, it's not gonna help Larry or anybody to get recommendations that aren't pragmatic or implementable.
Right. Putting 26 houses on stilts isn't gonna happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we've done it. We've looked at Winfield. Yeah, we, we have done Winfield. That's, I, I, look, guys, tell me if I'm saying.
I would like, I would like a fresh set of eyes at Winfield. I've been dealing for, this is my 15th year of issues on Winfield. There is nothing wrong with the work that Panonian Associates have done, but the fact is, we've now had, in just a couple of years, three major storms, and folks, and, and, and I just wanna make sure that we get a second opinion on other things that we might be able to do down there. The residents feel pretty strong about that. I don't think, no one's trying to offend Panoni and Associates. Dave has assured me he doesn't feel offended, and I think a new set of eyes in that particular area and those macro issues specific to flooding, I think, will be good, not just for the people in that immediate neighborhood, but for the township, because some of those things might be able to be implemented elsewhere.
We've looked at Winfield multiple times. And the Corps has, too, the Army Corps has. But there's been, there's been outside consultants look at it already. Well, yeah, we'll get a, we'll get a outside eyes.
Well, we haven't had outside people. The Army Corps looked at this a long time ago. The climate has changed, development has changed since. The capacity of Merwood Park, whether or not we can increase that capacity, these are, these are issues that's worth another set of eyes looking at, and I think that it's not an unreasonable request, and considering what we are, the various things we talk about spending, I mean, well, look, we just committed to, we, as a township, just committed to a million six in flood remediation over in another one of the wards. I'm not asking anybody for a million dollars here. I'm asking people to commission a, a, a fresh set of engineering eyes in, specific in the flood prevention and maintenance area to, to help these residents. And we are better at negotiating that, better at commissioning that than these residents would be if they just got together and did it. Thanks, Steve.
I kinda share your view. I kinda share your view. I'll support Commissioner Holmes, but I doubt they're gonna come back with anything that we don't already know. But I'll support Commissioner Holmes.
No, I'm, thank you. I appreciate that.
I also, I mean, whatever we can do to, to help these people, I mean, not only on a, on a, in a rain event in, in Winfield, you're taking all the resources in the township over there. If we could mitigate this, this issue, then we can spread the resources out without, throughout the township. As you know, they had the boat there, you know, so, you know, if we, if we're not having to pull people out of, out of the creek and, and the, and their houses.
That's why I'm gonna support it.
Yeah. Oh, no, no. I, I agree. I just think we should, we should take that, we should take that everywhere, you know, wherever we have.
Appreciate that very much, Commissioner Oliva, and I, and I agree with you. Having been there that day and realized how much of, how many of Public Works and how many of our first responders were just all sitting within that, 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 those couple blocks while we dealt with what was really a very dangerous flash flood.
It was very dangerous, and thank God Manoa bought that boat, because a lot of people thought we were crazy when we first did.
Yeah.
But.
The boat was a big hit.
And I said this in the past, and I'll say it again, and I know I'm a broken record, but we, we, I know we're taking this seriously, and thank God, because these 100-year storms are happening just about twice a year, three times a year, whatever. It's hurricane season. I'm understanding that we may get another storm from one of these hurricanes coming.
We only have five in, five in the Atlantic right now.
I mean, you know, we really gotta take this seriously and make, whatever we can, people's lives better before they start losing more of their property, their investment.
So, anyway, if I could, a simple oral motion, if I could move that we authorize Township Manager to, to issue a request for proposal for professional engineering firms with expertise in flood prevention and remediation, to advise us on issues associated with the Winfield-Poplar St. Dennis Lane area and Merwood Park. And so, that's my motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
So, the second thing I wanted to raise, Mr. President, was in response to the excellent proposal we had last week about the solar, about the solar power opportunities and the different ways that the township could go about ultimately installing and using solar power generated on some of our township properties, the Preck, the Township Building, the Skadium, and even the yard, I guess, down on Hilltop. And what I'd like to do, there were a lot of questions that were raised by some of us as a consequence of that presentation, that excellent presentation. It was an incredible amount of data. I would like permission to share that data with public financial management, who have been our financial advisors now for at least 10 years on all of our municipal bond offerings, and to get from them their professional opinion that if the township is committed to solar power, then what is the best avenue for us to do it? Just off the top of my head and with my own experience in municipal finance, I had come to a quick, not necessarily correct, conclusion, that I think it's simply a project we should undertake ourselves, pay for the arrays, put them up on the buildings, use the power, take advantage of the power that it generates, and stay out of the third-party power purchase agreement. There's some wrinkles to that with, in respect to how much debt we can take and whether we have to go to the DCED for approval, and I understand there's also maybe a township ordinance that might stand in the way of the sale of power generated by the solar if it's done by private entities. So, there's enough questions that I think we should, I think there's enough interest on this board to really investigate, I mean, all clean, you know, energy sources, but solar in particular. And so, I would like us, as a board, to authorize our Township Finance Director to, to contact our financial advisors, give them the information that we've been provided by the Solar Group, and ask them to advise us, if we're going to proceed, what the best way, the simplest way, may not necessarily be the cheapest, and they could differentiate it for us, but the simplest way for us to accomplish the, the, the construction and the use of solar power.
I'll second that, and Larry's got his credit card out today.
Well, I, these guys make plenty of money off of us and things they do. I don't know how much they're gonna charge us for a quick analysis. They've certainly done these before. These projects get done all over the country. Yeah, and, yeah, so I, I don't, I don't anticipate a price tag as much as I do think this is a policy issue that we, as a board, you know, ought to make a public statement about, go ahead and investigate this.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, if we're going to go to all renewable energy by 2035, this is a big step in, in doing that. Good for the future.
Great. So, the motion would be to authorize our Finance Director to, to investigate, to analyze the data that was provided to us by the Solar Group from their excellent presentation last week, and I have additional data that I could share with you, and then get their advice as to how to proceed.
I second it, so.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Motion carries nine zero.
Mr. President. New business as well. A number, the county and a number of surrounding townships have moved to decriminalize small amounts of marijuana. I think it's something that we should be looking at. It's gonna suggest that our police committee meet with Chief Iola, Deputy Chief Hagan, and have a discussion and report back to the board.
Okay. Hold on.
The District Attorney is working on a plan right now with that. In fact, I'm on the committee discussion about that, so you might see something covered from the county shortly. We can still, we can still call a meeting, because I have a couple of things I wanna go over anyway.
Yeah, I mean, that's something you can discuss in your normal course of business.
Yeah, we can still do that.
The law is not.
I'll send an email tomorrow. schedule time.
And, and one other thing. I think we were supposed to vote on resolution for a multimodal transportation grant.
Yes. I'd like to, under new business, there's Resolution 2189, 2020. He resolved that Havreford Township hereby request a multimodal transportation fund grant in the amount of $260,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Darby Creek Trail Extension. He had further resolved that the Board of Commissioners does hereby designate David R. Berman, Township Manager, as the official to execute all documents and agreements between the Township and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. Resolved 14th day of September, Township of Havreford. Second. Mr. Dr. Hart made the motion. I just read it. Mr. Oliva seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other new business?
Mr. President?
Mr. Siegel.
Yeah, in light of the fact that we've voted on the library and we are clearly moving forward on substantive matters, I would ask, I don't know, it really doesn't have to, I don't know that it's new business, but it's old business, that we have a number of items that have been deferred because of the pandemic. The first is that the Township Charter under Section 4-1102 has required this Board and the Township Manager, Department Heads, to affirm a Code of Ethics annually. We haven't adopted one, and I would end, I, I drafted one for consideration, and then the pandemic hit. I would ask that that be placed on our agenda next month. Second, we had addressed the issue of passing, of enacting a reasonable accommodation ordinance so that we would come in compliance with the Fair Housing Act. That ordinance was drafted in conjunction with Mr. Berman's office. And failure to, to address that issue could expose the township to council fees if there is litigation. There actually had been litigation or zoning application that fortunately went away. So I would ask that that be placed on the agenda for our next meeting. Another issue that isn't our agenda item but would require a zoning hearing were our discussions about sidewalks and whether we wanted to amend the zoning and planning codes to either make the implement, the addition of sidewalks in new construction and renovations mandatory. I think we need to discuss that. Fourth, we had authorized, and we discussed this publicly last fall, Mr. Berman to review and make recommendations to the Board about whatever needs or training he believes are appropriate to deal with what I would call issues of sensitivity, bigotry, racism, anti-Semitism, et cetera. It's my understanding that Mr. Berman is able to make that report and recommendation. And I believe it's important that we do so, particularly in the climate that we have now generally in this country, and because it may impact budget item. So I'd ask that that be placed on the agenda. And then finally, tonight, since we have now voted to renovate the library, I believe this Board, it is incumbent upon us to make a decision whether to demolish the Brookline School. If the library was significant enough to make that decision, now that the decision has been made, there is no reason that this Board should not move forward on that building. So those are items that I would request be placed for consideration in future meetings before this Board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Siegel. I, I agree. We can put the Code of Ethics on the work session. It's pretty straightforward. Same with the ordinance for the FHA. If you get that out to us from the ordinance committee. And we can all have the work session on discussion on sidewalks to begin next month at the work session. I believe Mr. Berman does have some recommendations and plans. He can present us at the work session next month. And I would probably refer discussion on the Brookline School to get a recommendation for use and stuff out of the Property Committee. But I would ask that you, the Property Committee, not only look at potential or possible uses for either the renovation or demolition, but also look at the Township Building at 2325 Darby Road. It's apparent that the library, even with renovation, does not need that now because of the spacing requirements that's done under the COVID and the pandemic act, that it will not fit the needs for there. So that now makes that building an acceleration that we can now take a look at as well. So if the Property Committee could meet and discuss both those buildings and then bring recommendations to the, to the work session, it'd be good.
We did, we have been meeting. There's an ad hoc committee looking at for other uses of the Brookline School.
Okay, can we make a report to the Property Committee on those meetings then?
We had said when we formed the committee that we would report back to the Board by the end of the year. We would not be able to do that by October, but we can have a report back by November.
Okay.
Rather us to report to the Property Committee instead of the Board, that's fine.
Well, I mean, we, you could, I mean, they obviously need to get it because it impacts other decisions that they would make with other properties. But we all would appreciate a copy as well. To all Commissioners.
And Bill, just, just to clarify, I, Bill Goldsmith said that the Old Quatroni Building might not be of use with social distancing, but they still could do.
Not the Quatroni Building, Township Building.
Right. I don't think, I don't think, I, I think they might still want to use that space for some of their virtual, I mean, we, we would have to get clarification on that, but I, I agree that it's not going to be used in the same sense that it was.
Maybe for storage is what I would.
For, for storage or for, they've been doing virtual requests for books, and you just show up and pick it up as, going into the building. And they might need that space if, but, just to clarify.
No, but we just, I, my intent is we got to get moving on.
Totally, totally agree.
So that's purely my intent. Let's get it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Appreciate it. Any other new business? Other business. Mr. D'Amelio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As my residents know, I usually hold first-world meetings, first-world constituent meetings at the Manoa Firehouse. And because of the pandemic, obviously, we cannot host them. So in order to reach out to some of the residents, I came up with this idea of meeting at a particular intersection so that residents can meet us outside and discuss any issues that they may have. I actually call it Commissioner on the Corner. And it's, the meeting is September 30th at 7:00 PM at Ashton and Briarwood. And I'll send an email out to my constituent base and those in that area that would like to come out and see us, and us being me, myself, the, the police, the chief, Dave Berman, and, and hopefully Joe Celia. Sorry, Joe, I'm going to get you out. And whoever else, Dave, you want to send Public Works, maybe.
Steve? Steve, you may want to change the name of that. They might, people might get the wrong idea. Commissioner on the corner.
Anyway, anyway, what was I going to say? Anyway, uh, I, I appreciate the fact that everyone's making time. It's, it's obviously a change, but it's something that, you know, we still want to reach out to our constituent base. And we can social distance. Meeting will only last about, hopefully about an hour. And, uh, and we'll see how it gets. It's better to try something different than not to meet at all with the constituents. That's how I feel. I also want to thank the volunteer fire companies for all their efforts in the last month. All five fire companies have been working really hard, been very busy. There's been a lot of accidents recently with entrapments, obviously two in the last two days, one Sunday night, one today that I know of. And all of our emergency services from, uh, from the paramedics, giving cans, the police are there. Usually, police are the first to arrive, and they actually, you know, if you watch them, I know, Bill, you've worked with them a lot on, on scenes. They're actually more involved with things like that, first to arrive if you have a medical condition. But the volunteer fire companies, the amount of training that they're doing, especially Manoa with the water rescue, I can't thank them enough for everything they're doing and everything they did in Winfield. And hopefully, we won't use the boat again this year, but you never know. It's there if we need it. I'm glad we're doing the stormwater study. I look forward to the report and see what we can do to help everyone in that situation. The Westgate Park, I want to thank Bryant. As you know, this Board passed capital projects to, to, to improve the, the parks in our township. And, and they're, you know, they're used by all of our residents. And we did the basketball court in Westgate, the, the backboards and poles and, and paving are going to be done. That should be done by, what, two weeks, Bryant? End of the month. And the Darby Creek Trail, which a lot of people use. I mean, these trails have been the best thing this township ever did. A lot of people use these trails. They're very popular. And I appreciate you repairing those, the trail at Darby Creek. And also the hockey court was, was done. So we did a lot there. Want to thank the, or congratulate the police on the accreditation. That's a huge, huge accomplishment, Chief. You and your staff should be, you know, very proud of the work that you do. So thank you for that. And sticking with the police, I, I've asked the chief, I see you getting a lot of calls from senior citizens about some scams that are going over the phone, especially with the election coming. So there are some scams, people trying to get voting information, Social Security, uh, that's another one. They're trying to get information from Social Security, Microsoft, and Apple. So please be aware of that. I want our residents to, to please be aware that this is happening and be very, very careful when you're given, given information out. So the chief, you know, you can update us on any of, if you're getting additional. I don't know if anybody else in the wards is getting, they seem to be increasing now for some reason, in my, anyway, a resident. The only other thing I have is, I'd like to, pardon me, continue with comprehensive plan. And I, I forget where we left off, but, but maybe we can get back. Do you want to give us, Kelly? I'm sorry, could we just, is that all right? Yeah. Update. Maybe we can reconvene. We shut down because of the pandemic and we, you know, we.
Correct. Our last meeting was supposed to be a very in-person, literal, hands-on workshop with community members, different people sitting at stations with maps, showing, you know, having conversations with the community to see what they want to change, what they liked about the township, what areas needed improvements, et cetera. As we are in a pandemic, doing that kind of a hands-on group activity hasn't exactly been safe the past few months. So there are options for online, similar types of activities. I'm hesitant to go that route because I believe that the elderly community really should be involved in this, this type of workshop. And I, I worry that they won't have the capacity or the ability to engage in something online that's that technical. So I'm hoping to reconvene that kind of a, you know, workshop sometime in the very near future. And hopefully, we'll be able to do that in person. But if not, there are other options.
Okay, good. Jerry, you may.
No, I, I, I think we need to wait until we can have in, I mean, we could have a, a committee meeting, but I think to involve the public, I, I don't think, you know, this is something we haven't done in 30 years. Let's.
Think you wait a little bit longer? Okay.
That, that was, that is our next step for public participation. We did have an online survey previously where we did get a lot of good feedback, but I don't want all community feedback to be internet or computer-based for, you know, people that don't have the means to do that.
Thank you, Kelly.
That's it, Bill.
Mr. Leavitt.
Yeah, just like to make you aware, last month was overdose awareness month, which, you know, was commemorated by, by HADA with, with the statue that was put up on Darby Road in the, in the split of Darby Road. Just want to take time to thank, um, thank HADA for, for what they do, for putting the statue there. I was there during the, their ceremony. Jerry, you were always, you were also there. And, um, and the families and how this, this, um, this statue really helped them. And, and was just something that, that a, a lot of the families who had, who have lost loved ones to heroin really enjoyed it. There's a lot of, a lot of people came, a lot of people who lost loved ones and just, I'm just glad that that's what we're doing. That's what HADA is doing for, for the community. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. McCloskey.
I just want to acknowledge, back to one of the Citizen Forum comments. You know, there is a lot of people doing really heroic work behind an iPad or behind a computer screen or within a household, in a, in a pod system. Everybody who's involved in the education of our children in a virtual world right now, I think, is, uh, is struggling to some extent or another. And it's extremely hard, and I doubt any of them are actually watching this live right now because they're either passed out asleep or they're working on their day jobs. So I, as someone who's trying to go through it, I, I can tell you that I am not okay, and my household is not okay. And I can't wait till this is, we get some progress in it. But I can reiterate what one of the letters said, that it's unsustainable. And I don't have a solution, and I don't have a great answer for what we could do as a township because I, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily have the space to offer room for every student in the school district. You know, that's, that's sort of what our schools do. So I don't have an answer, or nor do I have something that we can do. But I, I, I just plead with the, the general public that, you know, when you are out and about and you're walking down Brookline Boulevard, or you're at one of our parks, or you're at Hilltop Field, or you're anywhere else, and you, you know, you're being looked at by parents who are dying during the day because they're struggling with their kids, and they're watching their kids talk to their teachers, saying, I can't do this, that I hate school, that I don't want to be here. So, you know, that, that is what we as a society are choosing to do at the moment. So please, please wear your mask, and even if you don't like it, just wear your, wear your mask. Because, um, you know, your neighbors are struggling right now. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Siegel.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank the Township staff over the last few weeks between flooding, power outages, and everything else. They, from Mr. Berman down to everyone at Public Works, have done a remarkable job of trying to assist residents. I also know that residents get emotional. I, and I assume some of my colleagues have been sort of on the blunt end of some of those, uh, comments. And we understand the emotions. But I, I also want to remind people that all of us are residents too. And we also have, this has been a very difficult time for everyone since the start of the pandemic. And there is a sign up actually that they keep up, the car dealer I go to, that says, "Be kind. For everyone you meet is fighting a battle you know nothing about." And I can, I'm sure I can speak for everyone on the Board that we and our, and the staff are doing everything they can to deal with flooding, to deal with power outages, and all of the other things we face. And in that vein, I, I just want to make a personal comment. Thank this Board for, you know, its respect for religious holidays. In the upcoming week, we begin the, what are known as the 10 Days of Aw on the Jewish calendar, including the first two days, the Rosh Hashanah, the two, and Yom Kippur, which are the three holiest days on the calendar. And there is a prayer that we say called the Unatanatokh, which sets the theme for the holidays. And it is said many times that on Rosh Hashanah it is inscribed and on Yom Kippur it is sealed. "How many shall pass away and how many shall be born? Who shall live and who shall die? Who shall reach the end of his days and who shall not?" Last year, when we said that prayer, no one could have imagined what the following year would bring. And my hope is that everyone, that the, that we begin to be able to enjoy family, friends, and the things that we all miss, whether it's just being together with family, whether it's going out to dinner, or just a movie with your spouse. And I hope that we have a sweet and happy and healthy new year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel.
So, I, I forgot. I did want to thank Dave too, because he did a yeoman's job during that storm. And thank you for the work he did. And he really did a great job.
Thanks.
True leadership.
Mr. Lewis. Just a quick update on Ardmore Avenue Bridge Project. Talking to PennDOT, looks like they're going to come to closure in terms of finishing the project sometime in late October, early November. So we all look forward to that bridge. It's probably a four or five-month delay, but we all look forward to that reopening finally. And there's some other side project that Commissioner McCloskey and I will be working on to restore some, some, the entrance to Gulfview, which was destroyed unfortunately. So, but good news, it's, it's finally coming. So now, now we have to figure out how to improve that intersection by applying, Dave. We, we had talked about this before, about applying for that grant for an adaptive traffic signal at, at Ardmore Avenue and, and, and Haverford Road. If that's, that's possible. Is that on the list, Dave, or, or this Dave, or that Dave? I don't know.
We can't, we can't hear you. That's the.
Sorry. So they know we're trying to make adaptive signals from Eagle Road all the way to County Line, where we're not chief, I mean, long-term.
Yep. The next, the next, I don't, I don't believe there's any next round of grants for the balance of this year, October, November, December. The Arleys and the multi, the multimodals we just used for our trail. So I think we'll be queuing up for the beginning of next year.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
That's all I have.
I got one quick thing. Chief, I've been getting lots of texts.
Chief, I've been getting lots of text calls and the emails about large, and I've seen it too, large groups of kids on their bikes, and I had said that I would bring this up up tonight because I've almost had a few, 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 few kids because they would run in front of me, and I just wanted to bring that up to you.
We are, excuse me, are well aware that we've had multiple calls. I've seen it myself. We just put a message out to patrol, even no tolerance, because they've been wreaking havoc over the past week or so, 30 or 40 kids on bicycles, tying up the store, driving down Westchester Pike the wrong way. Eagle Road, they're all over the place, so it's it's becoming a serious problem, and we are addressing it.
And that bike lane or so-called bike lane, that is not a bike lane, right?
Officially, it's not a bike lane.
Yeah, because I got, because, because somebody asked me about that, and I knew that was what it was not a lane for bikes, but a lot, do you use it to run and ride other bikes?
Jerry, there's a particular name for that, is it?
The car door. The car door thing or the door.
It's not, it needs to be a certain width.
Yes.
Bike lane, it's, I forget.
There is a name for it. It has, it has caused some issues because people think it is a bike lane, and, you know, sometimes it's a bit of an argument with people about where they are to bicycle and what they're allowed to do, but it has helped, but it does cause some issues.
Thank you, chief, for all of you and your staff.
Thank you.
Dr. Hart.
Yeah, just briefly, it's late. Nearly three years ago, when we started talking about the Brookline School, I really hoped that that would be a place where we could build a new library. I think we've looked at it extensively, spent a lot of time. I do not think it was the best place. I do not think it would would work there. This isn't giving in to some local residents. I certainly did listen to the residents in the surrounding neighborhood, but I think our ultimate decision to go forward with renovating at the current site is best both for the eighth ward and for the township. All I have.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, thanks. I'll just thank the board for their votes tonight on the the issues involving residents on Winfield, and also for the overwhelming support for the investigation and hopefully implementation of solar power. And Dave, sorry to put you on the spot, do we have any kind of timeline on the issue on Karakong Drive with the overhanging property and the rock?
The shed that was the real concern has been removed, and so we're concerned now about the stability of the of the of the hillside there. We want to make sure that we're comfortable reopening the roadway, but I would expect Panoni to take a look at that, and we'll bounce our thoughts off PennDOT as well.
Great, thanks, that's all I have.
Thank you. All I have is, Hilltop Civic is my normal meeting, it's September 24th. Check their website to see if it's going to be outside or a Zoom meeting. Chief, congratulations on your reaccreditation, and that's all I have.
Flu shots.
We have a, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner D'Amelio. There is a flu program that we're running for township employees, but we have put out paperwork to everybody or put out notifications for the general public about how important it is this year, more so than ever because symptoms of the flu mimic COVID-19. So there's going to be some level of confusion, and there's also no research or knowledge into the survivability or the intensity of whether or not, if you have both diseases at the same time. So that's certainly an amplifier, thank you. So as far as we're trying to get 100% compliance here in the township among all township workers, because there's so many people here who are essential workers, we're trying to continue to protect them, and we're also encouraging the public to certainly go to any pharmacy, any clinic, any of the the aid places that are around here, any of these small rapid care places, or their personal physicians, whatever, there are many, many places, it's almost hard not to find a place where you can get a flu shot. Everybody supermarket has a pharmacy in it, you can get a flu shot. About, just about all of them are covered by every insurance program with no copay, and we do say if there's any township residents who cannot afford one, cannot get one, to please contact my office, and we will find resources for them. And that is the paramedic office, and it can be reached through 446100461000, extension 2222. And we will find the resources for them, as there are many clinics around that are available, run by Mainline Health and Penn and other places that have programs for people to receive shots free. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Excuse me, one thing, that's a buffer lane, what we're talking about.
All questions answered? We stand adjourned.